I'm at the glorious meeting of the Gloucester School Committee of Daughter, and I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successfully engaged lifelong learners, and I'll ask you to join me in this. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to God with liberty and justice for all. First order of business is oral communications. If there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee, this is their opportunity. The publics will have the opportunity, every school committee meeting, to be heard on the oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the school committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking on oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance of character. Our recording secretary is not here this evening because of baseball banquet, and he will appear at some point, I think, but currently not here. So if you do have any written statements, just submit them to the superintendent. So is there anybody here to speak on the oral communications?
Me, but you don't have a written statement.
No, you don't have to have a written statement. It's just if you have a written statement.
Okay, thank you. If anything I'm saying isn't pertinent, feel free to drop me down.
I just gotta, I gotta make sure somebody's recording, because we, our recording secretary, what, David? Okay, I'm gonna go with that. Sorry. Okay, sorry.
I have a few concerns.
Just state your name.
About PM steel, 10 pilot sill, I might probably use those two blocks.
Yes.
I just have some questions about something I'd like to see if it can be thought of within the plan. It may already have, but I just want to make sure these things are not concerned and actually get into the process. One is, you've talked about an art room, and I want to talk about a STEM room. Those are the jobs of the future. I love art, I know all communities are practically cutting because there's no money for it. STEM, we have to fund. Is that gonna be part of a room that you open and design? Are we not caring about STEM? Or where does that stand?
Can I address that one?
Yeah, sure.
I'll address that when we get to our phone presentations.
My other thing is that a report just came out that the population is significantly decreasing from 3 to 2% of growth rate of newborns, and that this is gonna impact how we pay for things. And the fact that all the money comes from the tax base to fund schools, how do we know we have the money to support these giant schools? My neighbor went over to West Parish and said, "It was no cousin." All the lights were on, it was like, "We aren't sitting, cost money." I just want to make sure we don't end up with a number full, because that is disastrous, sore in everybody's.
Okay.
And I did have one more, that artificial intelligence, is that factor in? It was too soon to talk about that.
Well, it's an elementary school, and I'm sure that there are technological things in the infrastructure that use artificial intelligence, because when we do these schools, we try to do them as green as possible. And consequently, they have a lot of very intricate technological systems for lights, which is an issue at West Parish. We've been asking EPW what the story about that is, and we are still awaiting an answer, but it is a concern. But, you know, it is integrated. Whether we're gonna be teaching it in elementary school, I'm not sure.
But STEM, you have to teach it in K1 because it's a language. If you don't start young, they don't get it, and that's where the jobs are. So you need a classroom, you need to supply it and stock it with different materials than you have normally. So I think that's really stuff, I don't know if you've done this.
Yeah, it will come up in the presentation. It will come up in the presentation.
I have one more thing, but maybe next time.
All right.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the oral communications?
May I address the school snack shop at GHS?
Yes, you may. Will we take this up, one?
You don't do it, I don't do it.
Well, I, you know, it's gonna be a long meeting.
I know it is.
I don't wanna keep people there all night.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Well, first of all, shorten this for three minutes. As a new class advisor to the GHS class of 2020, I would like to support-
Can you just state your name?
Oh, sorry, my name is Tracy Luthers. And I would like to support and propose bringing back the opening of the Student Council Snack Shop five days per week during the last 15 minutes of each lunch block. Opening the snack shop for all five days will offer more opportunities for student learning and will create more options to help and support the community needs. Please note that the focus of the Student Council Snack Shop is solely meant for educational purposes and for giving back to the community. The vision of GHS, Gloucester High School graduates, will have the integrity, foundational knowledge of problem-solving, communication, and collaboration skills necessary for productive citizenship. The Student Council Snack Shop is vital not only to reinforcing this mission, but vital also to giving back to the community in terms of lowering the cost of events that they go to and preparing students for future employment, even for opportunities here in the city of Gloucester. The snack shop does offer students excellent opportunities not only to fulfill the GHS mission, but for also teaching, reinforcing real-world marketing and sales experiences. Students will take and track inventory. They will review and place new orders, practice their math skills in a fast-paced environment, count change and manage money, which we all know is registers. Students need that practice. Provide proper customer service, communicate and collaborate as a team. They will work on specific days assigned, create a work schedule for employees, manage store opening schedule at proper times, analyze overages and shortages and make inventory issues that arise. They'll deal with customer complaints. They'll make changes necessary for a common goal. They'll build community involvement by even reaching out to local stores. They'll possibly work on negotiating skills with food vendors for reduced costs or free samples. They could market properly with eye-catching posters, promote a product for a healthy snack of the month. And the GHS class of 2020 recognizes the wellness committee's demands and would only sell the products that promote healthy eating, such as the items listed and agreed upon by that A-list. Giving back to the community is a personal thing for me also, because all funds or profit is returned to the students. The funds are solely used to lower ticket prices at events that they go to to support transportation needs that they need. We're giving back to the community, especially to the same students that have purchased these items at the snack shop. And they'll do that through, you know, supporting the community, reinforcing good nutrition, supplying wellness-approved items, lowering ticket prices for events due to purchases, helping with the cost of transportation, providing funds for people that cannot afford to go at all, providing funds for tax rentals or even dresses for low-income students, preparing students for future employment opportunities outside of GHS. Students in need have benefited from the profits in the past, and we would like to continue with that. And that's a part of the concept here. So thank you, school committee, for understanding the educational experiences and opportunities that this provides. We hope that the opening of the snack shop for five days per week will be reinstated so we can continue to prepare our students to be lifelong learners. And as I urge you to vote to reinstate the snack shop opening for the proposed five days a week, I also ask that you remember why we're out here. We are here for our students, and we are here to make sure that they have the most rewarding experiences here at Gloucester High School. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the oral communications?
Geez, it's a small quarter here, huh? I'm Patty Ann Ollman, that's why you didn't know her. Geez, we just did the pledge allegiance, and I thought to myself, wow, you know, we just did something for Joseph just in October, huh? And as I was researching these different places that we want to put these schools, different aspects, I figured out that every single place that we have talked about is a dedicated place to a veteran. Fine, Janine Nancy Doucette, Joseph Esmeos Jr., and, God, I just, I think, no.
Maxwell Passins.
Greens, no, East Gloucester, Maxwell Passins, I'm sorry. So they're all, you know, they're dedicated places also. So I just feel that we should be preserving, maintaining, protecting our open spaces. And I just feel like these three places, all of them, are just not fit for that. The neighborhoods won't support it, and it just, it doesn't fit right in the puzzle. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate all you guys' time, I see that. I go to a lot of meetings too, I'm on the Open Space Cemetery Commission, Light Up Meadows, PAB, People Against Liter. I appreciate your time coming here all the time and putting this together, I really do. But I just feel like this is not a good fit, and I hope that we can go back to the drawing board. I don't know how it works, but I hope we can. So thank you very much. Here's you, Joseph.
Anybody else who'd like to speak on the oral communications?
Marian Boucher, 93 Locksdon Avenue. Speaker Barry Shuden-Sweet, seen me many times. I just wanted to go on record that I'm opposed to all three sites for 440 consolidated school. Like Patty said, all three are dedicated. If we start this now, we're gonna be moving dedicated spaces all over the place, and I'm very opposed to it, and I'll see you at the city council meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks again for seeing us. Sean Gadbo is to our Green Street. I've made a few of the meetings, and one of the meetings I noticed the architect firm had a dotted definitive line on what was dedicated in the East Gloucester site. We know, as they said, the lady said that they're all dedicated. Where is that dedicated line at Green Street Park? Being that there once was tennis courts, and there once was ball fields, which there still is partially one there. What is dedicated up there? Where do you draw that line? And I do oppose to all three sites also. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll move on to recognitions. We have had a somewhat spectacular string sports season, and we were, as I was trying to figure out it all, we realized we didn't want to miss anybody, so we got ahold of Ryan LaFatta, and we have a whole list of all of the achievements of our student efforts.
Yes, and thanks to the athletic director for providing the information. And I'll talk with some of the individual accolades. The NEC Northeast Conference All-Star Awards. Names and sport, Ryan Argantino, Boys Lacrosse. Madison Vittans, Girls Lacrosse. Lily Favazza and Carolyn Muniz, also Girls Lacrosse. In Girls Tennis, Tori Corini. In Baseball, Marcus Monanino, Daleen Clark, E.J. Field. Mr. Philip Jones in Boys Tennis. In Softball, Ella Marshall, Madison Machado, and Jemima Gro. And Dean Campbell in Track and Field, along with Lauren Wood and Rumi Thomas. If we turn next to the NEC All-Conference Awards. In Boys Lacrosse, James Nelson. In Girls Lacrosse, Ruby Melvin, Carolyn O'Leary, Julia Kunes. In Baseball, we've got Benjamin Oliver and Zachary Abbott. Softball, Tracy Wood, Sidney McKay, and Elizabeth Schuster. In Track and Field, Leah Rudolph, Eve Thierback, and Will Kenny. I did get a little close. Some individual team honors. The Northeast Conference Team Sportsmanship Award goes to the Girls Tennis Team. The NEC Sportsman of the Year Award goes to Dakota Girard, Boys Lacrosse. The Boston Herald All-Scholastic and the Boston Globe All-Scholastic go to Sidney McKay for Softball. Note that she became the all-time wins leader for pitcher at Gloucester High School. Coaches' Honors. We've got the Northeast Conference Coach of the Year, Rory Gentile, in Baseball. Northeast Conference Coach of the Year, John Castro, in Softball. Northeastern Conference Coach of the Year, David Coleman, in Track and Field. And the Boston Globe Division Two Coach of the Year, John Castro, in Softball. With respect to some of our teams, the GHS Baseball Team was the Northeast Conference Champions, and our Gloucester High School Softball Team was the Northeast Conference Champions, the Division Two Sectional Champions, and the Division Two State Runner-Up. The 2019 Girls Softball Team was the most successful season in our school's history. And the names of our athletes, Elizabeth Schuster, Sidney McKay, Tracy Wood, Jemima Gro, Maisy Gro, Rachel Riallo, Courtney Good, Maddie Machado, Kelsey Luthers, Ella Marshall, Natalie Aiello, Jenna Hoofnagle, Riley Thibodeau, Ella DeGaspobia.
That's right.
Yep. Welcome to the room. Gabby Olson and Haley Shea, along with Kami Cooper. So again, congratulations to all of our athletes for both their individual and collective efforts, and go Fighting Pitcher!
Any other recognitions? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member would like to remove, discuss?
I know that we approved the consent agenda second.
David, say aye.
Aye.
We'd just like to mention that in the consent agenda, we have an anonymous donation of $1,193.04, and that is to clear up the lunch debt at the, at West Parish School. So, that's very nice. Okay, we'll move on to deliberations on educational issues, and the first up is the East Gloucester Building Project Presentation. Michelle Rogers is here from Door Whittier. And we are, because of the timeframe, the submission to MSBA to keep us on track has to go in by August 1st. And we are not meeting again until after August 1st. So consequently, we are a little bit out of sync on the vote, but we would be taking the vote tonight to approve the PDP submittal, which will get explained by Michelle.
Can I just recognize Roger, he's here.
Oh, it's her. Our representative of CPR is here, and he's here as well.
Evening. So the last time we met was back in March, on the 13th. And at that time, what we presented to you was sort of the big groundwork that we had to do in order to submit the preliminary design program, PKA, the PDP, one of the millions of anachronisms that you'll hear us talk about. So at that time, we talked about the number of sites. We talked a little bit about the constraints of those sites that we knew at the time. We talked about design enrollment and how that was given to you by the MSBA. And to answer one of the questions, it is a process that the MSBA goes through that looks at a 10-year projection for design enrollments. They don't take the current enrollment of your schools today. They project about 10 years. And they have found that this is the best way to project the number of students that will be enrolled within your schools. And so that was given to you as two options. One for a school for 230 students, and one as an consolidated school for 440 students that would bring you 10 years in the vote. So we talked about that, and then we talked about the schedule and the process of that time. And since then, or at that point, we also presented to you the educational program, which had been developed, again, to one of your points. One of the educational programs that we're instituted here was that we wanted to have space for project-based learning. And that is not just limited to STEM, but also includes STEAM, which is when you're science, technology, engineering, art, and music. And to have spaces for, I'm sorry, math, but music. To have spaces to do project-based learning. And so within the program that was developed and the space summary that we pulled together based on the educational program, we included spaces for that learning environment to happen. Now, this is something new as we go forward. This does not exist at West Parish School, but it is a piece that we thought was important to start bringing forward and as we move forward into more 21st century project-based learning, and to have that kind of space. Also to include some of that hands-on project learning within the library space. So that's why in many of the programs, you'll see that the art and the library are connected so that you can have that kind of back and forth, as well as part of the extended learning spaces. So that's how we began to develop our building diagrams. And from the space summary and the educational program, our building diagrams, we came up with a plus-minus 60,000 square feet for a 230-student school, or 88,000, plus-or-minus 88,000 square feet for a 440-student school. And once we had those numbers, we then began to do our adjacency programming. So what kinds of spaces want to be near what? Such as art and science, I mean, art and library, and where does special education go throughout the building? And how do we begin to start programming the school? So that was our early stage back in March. And so since then, we've met continuously with working group. We've met with the school building committee. We've had a couple of present, public presentations, including separate presentations to Ward 1 and Ward 2, most recently. And we presented the breadth of our options. Then we went through a series of developing criteria to rank those options. Actually, we developed the criteria, and then we developed the options. And we ranked those options, and what we're going to be presenting to you tonight is 14 options that we came up with. And our goal tonight is to narrow that down. The goal of the school building committee was to narrow that down to nine options. A few of them are required by the MSBA. So we don't have a choice whether or not we believe that they are good options or not. We still have to put them in the PDP for the MSBA to look at. Now, what's important to understand here is tonight we're gonna be asking you to vote on the preliminary design program. And what that means is you're choosing options for further study. That's why there's nine of them. So we haven't, we haven't eliminated it. We haven't chosen an option. We're asking for these options to go forward for further study. So, have that in mind. Go ahead.
Can I just, before we get into it, I just want to know exactly what we're doing. So this 14, the building committee got it down to nine?
That's correct.
School committee has no say in those 14 to nine? It's already been decided? I just want to be clear before we get into it.
Yep, so the building, the school building committee is recommending these nine to move forward for further study.
And our goal as a school committee is to what? Either agree with the nine or not?
Or add, or add them, add others back in.
Okay, so we do have that, okay.
Add the option to add others back in, but there, we'd like to start narrowing them down as we start moving forward. And I think what you're, what you'll see is that there's pretty practical eliminations of some of these options. So, there we go. So we're gonna review the options, we'll talk about the rankings, and then we'll review the options that are moving forward in the PSR, and then we'll talk about the schedule. Because our goal here is to get you back on the schedule. We lost some time, and so that's why we're trying to make sure that we hit this August date. So, MSBA requires that we submit a series of options that, including the CIP, which is capital improvements plan. There is a renovation only. And then there's additional renovations for both enrollments. And then there's new construction for both enrollments. What you see in yellow, this is gonna help you key into as we move forward. What you see in yellow is our East Gloucester site. What you see in blue is the Veterans Site. We only have to look at one option on the Veterans Site, and that is the new school for 440 students. And then there's Schoolhouse Road Site, and we only have to look at one option for that site as well. We actually looked at several options for both of those sites, and then narrowed it down. So we looked at 14 options, and these are the options that we looked at. Capital, there's only renovations only for 230 students, additions and renovations. We have three of those options in the B category. We have one C option, which is additional renovations for 440 students. Again, this is only East Gloucester Site, it's in yellow. We have a new school for 230 students, and then we have three options for 440 students on that site. On the Veterans Site, we came up with two different options. One preserved the existing ball field, and one put the school on the ball field. And then on Schoolhouse Road, we also have two options there. One, one turned the building east-west for better solar orientation to the classrooms, and the other moved it north-south, and that preserved more green space.
Oh, yeah.
So as we move through this, I'm not going to walk all the way through all of these options because they are out there on, the information is out there. I'm just gonna remind everybody what those options were. So on the East Gloucester Site, one of the, one of the things that came up tonight was the ball field here and the dedication of that ball field. And so that is a no-build zone, and it's to the east of the site. We also have the wetlands area and the wetlands buffer as part of those constraints, as well as the topography that is on the western part of the site, as well as the northern part of the site. So our eight options are capital improvements and renovations only for 210 to 230 students. And the reason why I included the 210 is because that's today's enrollment. And when you look at capital improvements, you're only improving the building. And that is not the building systems, you're not increasing classroom sizes, you're, you're doing very limited work, and currently that building serves 230 students. The projected enrollment for East Gloucester would be 230 students. So the capital improvements, what you see here in red, I think everybody knows this from before, are classrooms that are undersized for the MSBA guidelines for the functional use of those classrooms. What you see in green are classrooms that are oversized, which are very few of those. And what is yellow are spaces that are considered of the correct size. The multipurpose room is shown in yellow because it serves as a cafeteria. It would be half the size of what would be required for a gymnasium. So it doesn't count as a gymnasium in this space room here. So essentially, you're looking at a building that doesn't really have a gymnasium. The auditorium does not count as a learning space. And the music area happens up on the stage, so the stage is really out of play for performances except that you have to move all the music stuff off to, or not really have any kind of functional use there. Additionally, the administration space is about 25% of what's required by MSBA guidelines. And there's very limited space for your special education programs. The modulars are reaching the end of their useful life. The capital improvements plan does not consider replacing the modulars. They just wear out, and then they go away. So capital improvements is building system, roofs, windows, envelope, and it's usually over a 10-year period. When we look at renovations only, this is more of a gut renovation, but typically, when we're looking at renovations, we're not moving walls. So everything that was in red would continue to be in red. The blue is now symbolizing what the function of the space would be. But what we've done is looked at ways of separating things. So there's space that was green before is now being separated to provide some additional space for special education. The auditorium will be divided in half. It'll be used for two kindergarten classrooms that are currently located in the modulars. And that would also give you some room to expand the administration area. So the auditorium would no longer function as an auditorium, it would be a learning space. And then you would look at what you could do with the modulars.
Where's the gym?
There is no gym, it is the same thing. So it's the cafeteria gym space, so there are no improvements there as well. But what you could do is move music and art out into modulars. You would replace those, there we go. You would replace those modular classrooms and use them for music and art. And so in this scenario, the improvements are that all your core classrooms are within the main part of the building. Those are your two A options. We must choose one of those at least to move forward. We must choose one of those at least to move forward.
Can I say, how is it that if the classes are not big enough according to code, or we don't have the gym space, or the auditor, not the auditorium space, but the gym space or the cafeteria space? How are we able to use MSBA money if it's not being brought out? I mean, does ADA come and do what?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So it's not a code. It's a guideline for the amount of space that is required to teach students within that space. There are codes about the number of students that you could put within a certain square footage. But, you know, it depends on how they have classrooms. You'll be able, maybe Roger can talk about this a little bit too. But right now, if you speak to the MSBA, would not participate in those kinds of improvements. They have changed that a little bit. If you can show that you're making improvements, they are apt to contribute some money to renovations.
Seven, seven, nine percent or so.
It's not, yeah, it's a harder formula than what we've seen in the past. Right now, you're looking at 46%?
Forty-six percent, so it's a reimbursable rate, right? It's a reimbursable rate. It's a portion of the space that they would be able to contribute to. So rather than giving you full value that they might on a new project, a new school, they'd be giving you a proportionate rate for the spaces that are being renovated. Something less than, if they recognize it's a smaller space that's being renovated, they'd be able to proportionate what they would give you.
Yeah, what about the ADA improvements?
Well, so in something like this, you would trigger every single compliance error. I think we talked about that in one of your earlier. There are three major triggers. One is your structural, which would certainly be triggered by this. You would have to bring the whole building to size now. That requires pinning walls to the roof. You would have to bring the entire building up to be ADA, not compliance across the board. And the third trigger would be fire sprinklers. You would have to sprinkle it on the entire building. So then, this would be an option that you'd have to have a lot of discussions with the MSBA to say, okay, we're improving things. They'd be focused a lot on the special education spaces. We're providing more of those at this point in time. We're bringing kids out of modulators and into the core part of the building. So there might be some participation from them. But it certainly wouldn't be at the same level as a full-blown building because you're not meeting all of the guidelines.
I'd just like to inject that the issue there is that this is a new ruling, and there's not a lot of track record. There's no way to go back and say, well, this is what they did here. It's, we don't know what these numbers would be.
I think there's only been two out there right now that have sought any money for full-blown renovations. And a lot of that, you give, one more. It is something that would have to be a discussion with the MSBA. So B options are additions and renovations. So in this case, you're renovating the building, plus you're adding on. So this is where MSBA would say more because you're meeting your programs. So the additions would have to, everything that you do now has to meet the space summary and the educational program that was outlined earlier. So you'd need one option would keep the two. So the two wings that, oh, you can't see. The two wings that would be kept would be this wing here and this wing here in this option. Everything else would be demolished. And you would create a new educational wing on the west side, a new educational wing on the east side. And then, what you see here in the lower part here is the administration area. On top of that, this is a two-story option. So you would be building a second floor over the wing on the west side. And when we start building this, because of the way that the structure works for this building, you would end up building up and over this. So you would be building on top, not directly on top of it, like you'd want to build a second floor, but over it. So you'd have a superstructure to preserve it and impeding a little bit on that courtyard that we're creating. This option would be for 230 students. We would use the existing roadway that's down here. This is actually a road that belongs to the city, as well as this space down here. And we'd be increasing that to use that for parking and creating a bus loop so that we can begin to separate buses and cars. Because one of the issues that we have in East Gloucester is that the kids are being dropped off down the street and then walking up to the school. And when the buses come up to the site, they're actually doing a three-point turn to get in here and drop the students off. So there's a little bit of improvement to the parking and bus separation. But obviously, there is no parent drop-off here. So, parents are still dropping off down here, but we've increased the number of cars on the site for parking. And currently, there's 23, and as we showed, 36. But the gymnastics to do this requires a lot of retaining walls, a lot of regrading, demolition, and clearing the trees that are down in this area here. And if we all know that site, there's a lot of rock there. So there's some blasting that have to occur. You're also pushing up against the property line. So there's some boppersome pieces there. So you'd be pushing that, creating retaining wall between yourself and the neighbors to the north. And all of this would be preserving the dedicated ball field for open play space and increasing the playground space. Option B2, which is also addition of renovations, seeks to keep the auditorium, but changes its purpose. We understand that the auditorium is a valued space. But it's more valued as an auditorium, but we're looking at trying to keep the space and using it for learning spaces. We've turned it into the library and art area. We kept the cafeteria and turned that into administration. And the two classroom wings that we had previously kept still remain. Again, additions to both the east and the west. And again, a two-story, additionally, this time, you're not coming over the existing wing. You're only coming over the new wing to the east here. And Joel was asking earlier about a gymnasium. In all of these options, all the way through, our gymnasium is always going to be on the second floor and always above the cafeteria. And we've done this to decrease the footprint of the building. So we've been able to make our building footprint much smaller by doing that.
Is that a heightened ceiling or?
The ceiling, okay. It'd be a one-and-a-half-story height volume.
Just in that, just in that piece there?
For the gymnasium. Which actually, if we compare, like, our cafeteria's ceiling would have to be a little bit lower than what we typically do, which is usually a story and a half. We would lower that a bit, and the gymnasium would be a story and a half.
And how many practice spaces are in this one?
Thirty, it's 31, sorry.
Can I just ask, how many practice spaces we need for staff? Just throwing it out there.
Um, so, if you want me to, I'll talk about parking for a moment here. So the guideline that we typically use when we're designing is one-and-a-half spaces per staff. And for this particular-sized building, we were looking at trying to get to 100 and, I'm sorry, 130, thank you. 130 spaces based on the staff.
You need 130, I mean, you're only at 36?
So the 230 students?
Sixty-eight or 230. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading a little wrong line. Sixty-eight is our goal for this, thank you. Sixty-eight. However, the city of Gloucester has a one parking space for 500 square feet. And that would equal 118 spaces.
But how many do we actually need for staff?
Sixty-eight.
We need 68. This has 36.
Correct.
But the city is saying we need more.
To comply with zoning.
To comply with zoning. And we could get away from that.
Right, right.
And now you have 23.
And now you have 23. So, staff is still parking out on the street, and parent drop-off is still on the street. When I get to the 440 student spaces, we're looking for 130 spaces based on 86 full-time employees. So our B3 option, again, two stories, 230 students. Site plan is fairly similar here. In this option, we looked at keeping the auditorium as an auditorium space. So in this particular option, you have a two-story space over both of those existing wings, as well as the new wing that we're building. So this entire floor plane, with the exception of these two spaces, would be two stories tall. And again, the gymnasium sounds sick. Moving on to the C options, which is additional renovations for 440 students. This just complicates the problem just a little bit more because our site didn't get any bigger, but our population just doubled. So our building footprint got bigger, our parking area got smaller. We tried to keep the bus loop, but now all parents are dropping off at the street. And we have seven parking spaces, plus two abandoned spaces. So a total of nine. Still, all the other site options and gymnastics. We have to go through clearing the forested area, blasting the rocks, while this is happening here. Our D option is a brand-new school for 230 students. And so when we do a new school on a site, we have a little bit more freedom to push and pull that school around that side a bit. So we push it all the way back, right up against the property line, which again is maybe we have to go and ask for. And this time, by pushing it all the way back, we increased the parking area. And although this would be like a tier level, it's almost, you know, it steps up as we're going up the hill. This would give us the opportunity to give parents a drop-off loop. So they could actually come in off the street and drop their students off. And the buses, which are in yellow here, would come in off the street and have a separate drop-off loop. One of the complications that we've seen from all of these sites is that delivery is by bisecting the play area from this school. So you would always have to come when deliveries were happening. Because students would be wanting to go out to play, and delivery would have to be coming. So you'd have to manage that, which I think is done today. With some complications as well. But that would continue to happen. This is a two-story option. We're beginning to see now the dedicated spaces here for extended learning. They're in the lighter blue. They're set within the core of the academic area, so all students have access to those spaces. And therefore, students will leave their classrooms and go and have a project-based learning environment. E options, new schools for 440 students. So we have three of these options. And again, our site didn't get any bigger, but we're able to push and pull, rebuilding a little bit more. And by now going to three stories, we're using a similar site plan layout, but it's three stories tall. So the academic wing itself is three stories. The cafeteria is now a story and a half, and the gymnasium is a story and a half. So those are, the whole room plan is about the same length. Again, we have this tiered parent drop-off. But we've increased the number of students and increased the number of staff and did not increase the parking area. So we still have about 56 parking spaces on this particular site. And this is the site that we're looking for, approximately 130 with 86 full-time employees.
Can I have a question? I have a question you might not even know the answer to. One of the, I don't want to use the word complaints, but one of the concerns that was expressed when we did West Parish was that when you walked in, the atrium was so big. So I know going forward, I want to be cognizant of that issue. Do we need all that space in the atrium? When you do your design and try to figure out where a school is going to fit on the property, are you taking into consideration of maybe doing things a little differently than West Parish that may give you more space for parking? Like, in other words, if you didn't have that huge atrium, you might gain five spots. You know, things like that? Or are you going by square foot? Like, how do you, without having a designer, how are you?
Right. So when we do our space program, we allot all those spaces and we assign all the square footage to each of those spaces based on, for special education, it's based on functional use. We need it for those spaces. And on the classrooms, it's based on what the MSBA guidelines are. And most of those spaces are MSBA guidelines. We take all of those, we add them up, and then we give ourselves a multiplier of 1.5, which is going to include all our exterior walls, our upstairs, our toilet rooms, and everything else. That is the maximum size that the MSBA wants us to have. So we are limited to that amount of square footage. And if we can tighten it up, we do.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And just, you know, talking a little bit about West Parish comparison here for a second. It was brought up about the fire access. So at West Parish, a fire truck can get all the way around that building. The playground was designed as a fire turnaround. The whole front of the building, the bus drop-off area. There's a small area that was worked out with the fire department that they can get their ladders to, but can't get the trucks to. In this situation, we would have a lot of difficulty getting the fire trucks around the building. And that is true for almost every one of those options. So in order to get a truck through to the back of this building, we would really have to push back, maybe even purchase land to the north, and actually regrade and put up some retaining walls in order to get a truck around. So the E1 is a three-story building. E2, also a three-story building, a little bit different shape. This time, we've flipped the building around. We've set the tallest parts of the building, which is the gymnasium and the cafeteria, on the lowest part of the site. This helps in getting into the site, maybe helps with scale a little bit. Put the academic wing to the east side, which gets it closer to the playground area, and open up the site just a little bit.
Just for clarification, yeah, if I go build a three-story house, it's only about 27 feet tall. How tall is a three-story elementary school?
48, yeah, around that. It's, your floor-to-floor height's about 14 feet. I don't know where I landed here. Any questions? Oh, parking, they have 37 parking spaces. Again, very similar to the other options for our site layout on this one. And then finally, our A3 option. Again, new building on the site, three-story wing. This is just a little bit different shape than the others. Again, we've tried to separate cars and buses and parent drop-off that we could do with the site that we're given. Any questions about, that's the end of E East Gloucester Site. So any questions about those sites? Our F options are the two options on the Veterans School Site. So here's the Veterans School. The dotted line there is the property line. But isn't really, the ball field, from what we've heard, is the ball field is available to support a building site.
That's a label opinion. That's, we have a label opinion of this.
So, but what we wanted to do is try to look at two different options. One was to stay to the east of that property line, and the other was to build in the ball field. But you can see that the ball field is across that line anyway. So, we looked at a four-story building, or essentially a four-story building. The first level would be parking, and this is down on the grade. And what you see here is the parent drop-off loop. They would come in, loop around, drop the students off along this edge here. Students would disembark here and either take the elevator or the stairs to the main parts of the building. And then they would exit the same way that they came in. This would require the ball field to be rotated, and there would be room to do that. It would rotate 180 degrees just to get away from the building area. On the second floor and the floors above. So this is three stories of academic learning and one story of parking areas. So on this level, you would have a bridge condition for your deliveries. Your cafeteria and gymnasium are on the same level on this particular option. Your bus drop-off would come in off the street, drop off along here, and then continue down. Play area is limited here to, it's like a rooftop over the parking area. So that's immediately accessible to the kindergarten classrooms. All other students for outdoor play would have to go down to the parking area and then out to the ball field. And then on top of this would be the library, would be on the second floor. And then, for the other academic classrooms, would be on the third floor.
So you're just using the 14-foot math, you're looking 56, 60 feet.
I think it was 63 feet. A little bit, because of the parking garage, you have to get a little bit taller. A little bit, because of the parking garage, you have to get a little bit taller.
Sure, sure.
And because we're holding up three stories on this, it's a...
Substantial parking difference, yeah.
Yeah. And that's where, that would be the starting point. We'd have to talk to the fire department about what kind of fires we need to go into the garage.
And that has 80 parking for, and you mean 130?
Correct.
Eighty-six?
In the parking garage? Eighty, eighty in the parking garage.
Eighty-six full-time staff again?
Eighty-six full-time staff, so you're FTE, and at 1.5 it would go 130. F2, option F2, moves the building back on the ball field and uses the existing school footprint for all the parking and bus loops. So what's in yellow is the bus loop. You would have buses come in and drop off on, you'd have a long drop-off zone and a lot of equipment, a stacking area for the buses. And then the parent drop-off would be there in blue, and they would come in, loop around, and they would also be dropping and picking up along this entire edge here. Your front door faces the parking area. There is the playground in the back of the building. And in this option, what we've done is designed the hardscape play area to come all the way around the back of the building. So the hardscape play area would be the fire truck access for this building, all the way around the edge. And then it would also have the front of the building available to you through hardscape bikes. This is a three-story option. Again, the gym is on the second floor, library's on the second floor, and then breaks, four and five are on the third floor.
Where is green space there? Like where would kids play and what do you envision?
All your green space and play, all your play area would be back here. So you would have playground equipment and green space back there. You might want to do a dedicated small pocket playground here for kindergarten students, and then all the green, other green space here. There is no ball field.
Oh. What, all the gray area would be green space?
Play space, yeah. Green or play, yeah, it's open play space. So whether it's equipment or open field, that's to be determined. There's also a garden program as part of our educational programming, so we would find gardening space here as well.
Would you have the garden program in that slide before it? So on with the rooftop play area?
It would be, it would be difficult to have a garden program. I mean, you'd have to find space, go down to the garage, and then find some green space. I mean, it certainly wouldn't be the same size as, like the West Parish is a pretty extensive garden, which the water supply is good there.
I'm still not, what parking, are you still not going up parking?
So we have quite a bit more parking here. We have 100.
Says E.
It says down to 80 here.
It says down to 80. I think we had 100 spaces here, and I think there's room to do 100. I don't know why we're down to 80. Oh, because of retaining wall? Yeah. So we had, we had pushed, we had pulled this back a bit. We had 100 spaces, we pulled it back because of retaining wall. We could increase that too.
You could make it 100?
We can get to 100 on this one. But still preserve quite a bit of green space.
So just as we analyze these options, a question again here about MSBA contribution. So if we were to move the East Gloucester project off the East Gloucester site, would, and as part of this, the school committee in the city commits to tearing down the old East Gloucester school, will MSBA fund be available to tear down the East Gloucester school even if we're not rebuilding on that site?
So we, actually, that's a really big question, and we just had that conversation with them last week. And they told us to build it into the project budget.
Right. I was thinking, some of these options require, when a ball field, there's potential, if the city agrees to replicate a ball field, but the school is currently, it costs money to take that school down, we don't want to see another full or a whatever, where it just sits with boards and our windows, you know?
Right. So we would, what we've seen in other districts is that the building would come down, the land would get leveled, and then you can take it from there.
Right.
The city, it turns it back over to the city, and then we take it from there.
And is there reimbursement to that? When you say it's part of the project?
It's part of the project budget, so it will actually be included in the project budget. And then the ongoing discussion is about how that money gets reimbursed.
Is there a potential to get reimbursed for the cost of tearing that down? Or is it just going to the cost?
The question is on the table right now with them. And but they, they told us to go ahead and include it. When we start doing our, we're out for cost estimating right now, so part of the cost estimate will include for this option, the tear down of, and leveling of the site of the option. Schoolhouse Road. Again, 440 students school, this is the open part of the site. And so we have two options here. The G1 option places the building in the open portion of the site. And again, we can maximize parking here. We're showing 130, and we can maximize or just expand that parking because you have the room. So in this case, you have the priority, do you want more green space and less parking? We have a dedicated bus loop and dedicated parent drop-off area. And there's plenty of open space for playgrounds and green space, spaces for the children to play, as well as exploratory science programs with wooded areas as well. The G2 option just rotates that same building footprint and pushes it into the woods. So this would take some leveling of the grade in the back area, we would be reducing the tree area. And but we would also be opening up space to the east so that you would get the same kind of open space to wooded area proportions. The difference between this one is that we've set the building further back so that there's an easement here, and we're down below that.
Can you put another ball field in, on this space? Is there a farm? Or soccer field, whatever?
There is, there is a ball field currently within this open space. So the, whatever's there could stay. What, if you wanted a second, another one back here, and you lose the tree area, you have to level that?
There's no ball field on that space. Yeah, playgrounds still right, maybe just a back slot would be up any other lines, but very small portion of that field would be saved.
So if you go back to that here, is that one? You can see there's, there's a back slot right here. Yeah. So those, those are all the options. All 14 of them. Then we went through scores now. So the scoring matrix was developed over the course of several weeks, where we went back and forth. We talked about what's important, we talked about prioritizing needs. We came up with, I know you can't read it, but there's a huge number of priorities through here. And then they're separated into different categories. Under education, how of the building and the site are putting educational needs. How is the site working? What are the benefits of the site? It includes everything from parent drop-off to impact on neighborhood for traffic, buffer zones, and then the building itself. And the building itself is really, measured the building. Most of the new buildings all scored very high, obviously. The additions and renovations were medium, and the capital improvement parts of the building scored obviously low. All of these options were, all these scoring matrix, every one of those options was scored against this matrix. And then if you look at this, the 35, 45, and 30, you see that that adds up to 100. So the next question is, well, what about cost, right? So we wanted to make sure that we weren't considering cost at this point in time. We want to make sure we're choosing the best option for the educational, educational option. And then, next time we get together, we'll be looking at the cost. And the cost may or may not make a difference. The point is, right now, you're going to choose the nine that need your best educational needs, and then we'll go look at the cost as we move into the next phase.
That's a question. When you get to the cost phase, like this next meeting that you discuss cost, are you going to be able to discuss reimbursement related to those costs? Or, in other words, what percentage would be eligible versus what's not? More so for the renovation part, I'm thinking.
Right. And just to be clear, right now, we're talking about a magnitude of, you know, a comparison cost. We're not really talking about the actual dollar of incentive.
Okay.
Okay, so it's in a order of magnitude at this point in time. Is option A more expensive than option B, and if so, by how much? And then, what we will be able to tell you, based on the estimating cost, cost estimates, you know, that's, we'll be clear, these are estimates. Based on those estimates, what percentage will be applied based on the matrix that Roger here is going to be working up for, because it's a very complicated matrix. So after going through this with the working group and then presenting it to the building committee, the options that were chosen to move forward, our goal was to choose eight. And we walked out with nine. And the reason why we walked out with nine was because at one of the meetings, we heard that renovations was really something that somebody wanted us to take over. Just renovate the building, see what it looks like. So we think that's important. We think that it's very important that we look at what that would do and what it would cost. So what you see in green are the options that we've chosen to move forward. So in the A category, the capital improvements only is your baseline, and NSBA wants to know what that is. So that has to go forward. And then renovations only, we chose to move forward because, so you think that the district wants to know that. Under the B options, you have to choose one of those. And the one that scored the highest was the B1 option that takes out the auditorium and actually builds within that space. So only the two academic ones remain in that option. We only have one additional renovations for 440 students, so we chose that one. And we only have one new school for 230 students on the East Gloucester site, so we chose that one. The new school for 440 students, we had three options to choose from, and the one that had the split level was the one that scored the highest. And that's the one that we summed the cafeteria and the gymnasium into the lower portion of the hill, and moved the academic wing for the teenage. And so that one scored higher than the other two. So those are the options that are going to be followed on the East Gloucester site. On the Veterans site, we had to choose one of them. So we chose the one that, the one on the ball field, which scored higher than the one that had hardly been ready to build the four-story building for many reasons. And then the Schoolhouse Road, the east-west and the north-south scored almost a downfall. And so we decided that it was worth moving forward, and it scored both of those options further. So we're pushing forward. All these are options for further exploration. So we're, we're taking just a few off the table, and we think it makes sense to take those that we've chosen off the table. And that is what we're asking you to, our recommendation to you to approve for tonight. And then going forward with the schedule, today is the 26th, so we're in that orange there. We're presenting to you on the July 9th, we're going to City Council for a very similar presentation. On July 12th, we hope to have back our costs for all 14 options. All 14 of them have gone out to the cost estimator, and we'll have those estimates back. So those will, all, the cost of all options will go forward within the PDP. And then on the 18th, we're going to share those costs with the school committee and then get the final recommendation for some of them. Our goal is to submit the PDP to the MSBA on August 1st. And if we do so, we think we can get you back in fact.
Doesn't the school committee have to approve the final plan or not?
Oh, yeah, we don't have that, we don't have a final plan. This is just, this is just to move forward.
Huh?
Well... But this, the preferred schematic design.
The PSR?
Yeah.
Yeah, the PSR doesn't go out for...
Why even mean the final location?
Well, that would be the...
Right, so that's not for us.
Right. Again, I'm just wondering what our goal, what the school committee goal is, because a lot of people get confused on what the building committee does and what the school committee does. And the full school committee doesn't have as much say as the building committee. So that's why I'm just trying to find out, when do others that aren't on the building committee get to weigh in? Is what I'm just trying to figure out, when that happens again.
As we, as we close up the PDP, and we move in in the, in August and September, that's when we start stating those nine options again, we'll be back here to present to you and hear your comments.
It's a slow-moving train.
I'm trying to get it up.
So the nine options that are presented are the ones that were recommended by the working group and the building committee. Is there any, is anybody allowed to weigh in on that, those choices? Like I say, they all will go, they all will go forward on the PDP, but these will be indicated that they're prior.
So, so I, you know, I'll say this. I saw a couple of designs up there that didn't, you know, didn't impress me at that meeting, I said, oh, that kind of looks good. I mean, school, neat idea, you know? Well, one of the vets' ideas, I always thought that site was like DOA, like, you know, someone they're showing like, oh, you know, if you're really sharp on your pencil, maybe you can get a school out there, you know? That's, but what I have a problem with, because this is my first time through this process on this side of the desk, and last time listening to this, I was out there. And what I have a real issue with, and it's happening again here, is that, you know, people have been sounding the alarm about these sites from the beginning. And all they keep getting told is, well, we're not there yet, we don't even know if we're going to use these sites, yeah, we're not there, yeah, we're not there, we're not there. We just hold on, calm down. And then we get to this point, and, oh geez, look at that. After tonight, these are those sites. And then when they start continuing to sound the alarm they've been sounding for 12, 18 months, they start getting told, well, if we stop now, we have to go back to the drawing board, we're going to lose X months, X years worth of progress. This is what happened with West Parish. It was, hold on, decisions aren't made yet, they're not made yet, calm down, calm down, calm down. And then it was, well, if we don't keep going to West Parish, we're going to lose two and a half years of work, so we've got to go forward with it. And so I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. We are at this point, we're essentially foreclosing the opportunity to look anywhere else, despite the fact that we've been telling the community for months that, hold on, no decisions have been made yet, no one's saying we're going here or going there, but now we're very clearly saying it's going to be one of these three, or it's bust, right? And so I'm not, you know, I don't know that I want to be part of this happening again in the city, because this happened with West Parish. And so like, that's overall this process, you know, when, when was the appropriate point, if not now, to pump the brakes and go, well, hold on? You know, we haven't chosen, we're vets, we don't have chosen if it's going to be vets in the ball field or vets not in the ball field. We haven't chosen Schoolhouse Road, north, you know, north-south or east-west. We haven't chosen whether it's the East Gloucester, you know, in any orientation, but it's going to have to be one of those. And none of those, you know, take into what this request has been from the communities in those various neighborhoods of neither, you know, none of the above. And so this seems like the last possible time to say, hey, wait a second, we haven't explored none of the above. Or if we have, and I can, you know, go to most of the building committee meetings, I have some reading, we have, I don't feel like we have, you know, we had Harrison Avenue took off, we took off the pines, we took, you know, but I just feel like...
Don't we explain that?
You know, we, we started this process two years ago, Joel. We had meetings at the pine, about the pines, we had meetings, we had Harrison Avenue, we had the pines, we had Swinson's Field on the board. And it's been whittled down to these three sites. I mean, that was part of the process, it wasn't just, but yes, you're right, this is the point where we say, this is, these are the three sites that we're going to continue to look at. Now, if you're suggesting that there's another site that we should look at, it is a little late in the, in the game, but...
I mean, I'll point out, you said, and I'm not saying I have the answer, but what I'm saying is, February I said, you know, the O'Malley parking lot, right? There's enough room out there, that parking lot's 75,000 square feet. You got, you got a track we don't take care of or use. And granted, that track's in a flood plain, but it's a man-controlled flood, we have a causeway, we gate at Cap'n Hucks, so when the flood, when the flood comes, we shut it off.
Correct. That track, that track is used, and that hill is used. Let's be clear. Let's be clear, it is used and maybe it's not in great shape, but it is used.
The flood plain is not controlled. It goes right over the road.
Anyways, but I said, I put that out there, just trying, I'm just saying there was like the magic, I put it out there. And there was, I got some response from some city staff. They said, oh, you know, from the engineering department, people said, oh, that, you know, that could work. But I got nothing back, you know, the building committee, I didn't see it, you know, really hit an agenda. I didn't hear it get, you know, so that was just one person, one idea. It just kind of got pushed, right? It said, eh, it's not the three we're looking at, and we've narrowed it down to already. It got pushed, that was back in February. The parking lot's not, the existing parking lot's not in the flood plain, the field's in the flood. Tony, I do, I do real estate property for a living, I can tell you it's not the flood plain, all right? But I'm just, I'm just...
Okay, all right, just, just...
So I'm just saying, that was, that was me having an option and it was given, you know, nothing, no real look, no, no real response. Other members of the community may have also been willing to, or waiting. Again, I knew it because I'm a big loudmouth, right? I'm impatient. But the rest of the community's been being told for months, now's not the time, now's not the time. You know, thanks for the thanks, I don't need this, like, you know, the applause here. All I'm just trying to say is, we've been, we've been telling them, don't worry about it, don't freak out about it. We haven't, we haven't narrowed anything down yet, we're just, we're still exploring. We didn't even know we have good title of any of these spots. We might be not, and... No, I'm saying, and now all of a sudden, oh, look, everything's lining up just right. And it's these three spots that we, we all knew it was going to be a year ago. And we've been gaslighting the community saying, don't worry, that decision's so far down the road. And now we're at the decision, we've given no one an opportunity to really provide an alternative. We've been telling them, don't worry about it, it's not time to talk about it yet. So if it's not time to talk about it right now, or wasn't time to talk about it then, it's certainly not going to be time to talk about it after tonight's vote, right? And then, and then we're just doing West Parish all over again. Where we get the blinders on, we see the end goal, it's, you know, five years away. And we're not listening to anything else that they come intervening in the meantime. And, you know, I didn't like what happened last time, I don't like this happening this time. And it's not, that's, that's me. So I'm not into, again, I personally like what I saw up there. And if I was a parent of a child, hopefully he gets to join one of these schools, I'd be excited about it. I would support it, you know, based on the educational benefits of these sites and what I think it'll do to improve these neighborhoods, into all that. But I'm just not into what we, as a committee, are doing to, you know, how we're handling this process. I think, I think we are, you know, being unfair in this process and disparaging and cutting off, you know, input from the community.
The O'Malley site was mentioned. It was considered very briefly because it's not in the catchment area of either of the schools. That's a problem, I mean, as well as Beeman. The Beeman site was, but that's the immediate disqualification.
Catchment areas are fluid, we know that, which means catchment areas, I mean, right?
No.
They are what they are.
You cannot make Beeman, I mean, O'Malley, the catch area for East Gloucester and for veterans.
You can make parts of Prospect Street that are closer to one school, the catchment areas are for a school further away.
How many kids are going to get bused in there for O'Malley? And how many parents out there want their kids right there at O'Malley? Your group might think that everybody in the community wants this.
I'm an island of wonder, I don't have a group.
But this has been discussed with parents too. Just because you're saying this and it's an idea, which I, when you showed me the plan, I thought it was a great idea. When I talk to parents, they're like, absolutely not. So you're making it sound like the whole community out there wants it at a different spot. So just don't present that to us.
I said, I'm not saying it's a magical, I'm saying, but that was one alternative. And the other reason it was even briefly looked at was, again, because I was impatient and a big loudmouth and shouted out in everyone's face, right? Everyone's been told, sit down, wait, be quiet, we're not making that decision yet. It's not time to talk about that yet. And that argument is going to flip right to, it's, we're too far down the path, we can't talk about it now, we're too far along. And there's never a spot to actually talk about it.
Joel, when we, when we say we haven't made the decision yet, we haven't said, we have placed all the options on the table that we're considering. We haven't made a decision which of those options we're going to take. But it isn't that we, you know, that we're still looking at, at new sites. That decision was made by the building committee, you know, a year ago.
This process has been in place for a long time.
When we eliminated Harrison Avenue, when we eliminated the pines.
And the one down at Rockford. We've talked about many other sites.
We looked at everything that was, every piece of city land that was available.
And I walked in with you, but I'm saying, we, we've been pushing people off.
Why? We've had many meetings. People talk to us every meeting we have.
And the response they get is, we're not there yet, we're not there yet, we're not there. And then boom, now we're here.
First of all, this is very unfair. When did we say to, this school being at a different location, other than we've been discussing, when did we say to the public, we're not there yet? Give me one example. When, who came forward and said, other than the properties we're looking at or the properties we've eliminated, who else has come forward to say? Who has come forward to say, wait a minute, you didn't look at this spot? Wait a minute, I want to talk about another spot. Went through this process in the last two years, has someone come forward to say that? A spot that we have not looked at and we've said, no, we're not there yet?
Repeatedly.
When? One example. When? And what was the spot?
The school committee meeting when half of Green Street showed up, right?
Wait, can I say something? We have three sites. And we have not had a consistent message from anybody that they don't like any of those sites. They say, I don't like this site, I don't like that site, and I really want to keep it where it is. So I am hearing different groups of people have different things. And what we're learning, and every community learns, there are pros and cons to every site we have. There are people that are going to like one, there are going to be people that say, I don't want it near me. There are people that are going to say, don't change a thing because I love the auditorium. We have to say, these are viable options, we need to explore them. And none are going to be agreeable to 100% of the community. It's unfortunate, but it's a reality, there is no space. If you lived by O'Malley and you took away the parking and the, and everything else, you'd have traffic issues, you'd have concentration of middle and Beeman and everything else in one neighborhood. And you'd have neighbors there saying, you're taking away our skate park. You're taking away our ball field, you're taking away... So this is within the catchment area of the kids that will go to it and the families that will benefit from it. So that's why these three are out there.
Don't you think it's a little perverse though? That, so a school, right? You talk to anybody in the real estate, but schools are supposed to be this phenomenal thing for neighborhood. Property values go up, families get to move in, right? Isn't it a little weird that every place we want to put an elementary school, which otherwise is a, excuse me, a celebrated thing, we're getting huge pushback from these neighbors?
You don't think if O'Malley, if we say we're putting the, but O'Malley, the school's not going to be built?
I could be dead wrong about O'Malley, I'm just saying, that was, that was one person shouting out one option, you know? What I'm trying to say is, this just seems a little weird to me that, again, elementary schools, people should be clamoring to get one of these schools into their neighborhood. And again, what it's going to do to their neighborhood, right? It proves everything, right? But for some reason, these three sites that we've been focusing on are upsetting each of the neighborhoods. And we have been telling them, when they come and say, we don't like this, we don't like this, we just keep telling them, don't worry, we're not sure where it's going yet, we're still looking. We may not have good title of these spots, you know, everyone chill out, right? And now like, oh, wouldn't you know, we've entitled all three and these three ones are locking down and that's, you know...
So last week when we were here and this room was full, and I was in the audience, when Marion yelled at me. Hi Marion, it was okay, we had a conversation, it was a good yell. No, 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 and I'm not saying that's bad. No, 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 I'm kidding with her, I'm not saying it was bad, it was a conversation.
Just stop talking.
That's outlined. So last week when we had, I meant it in a good way, Marion, I wasn't saying yelling at me to be bad. I meant that we were having a conversation. I was on this side talking to Marion and then I was over here talking to some people that were sitting here. The room was clearly divided, this side, and it's mostly people that were here, some that are here tonight, want the school at East Gloucester, definitely, I get it, they love it, they want it in their neighborhood. The other half was telling me, we definitely want it at Green Street. But they don't want to speak up as loud because they feel bad for the people in East Gloucester. So just because people are here in front of us tonight does not mean there's not a very large crowd out there that are very acceptable to these options that are up there. Because you're going to find that there are. Now, the O'Malley thing is the only thing you've come up with to say you have another site. Other than that, I think Jonathan and Kathy and half of us walked many sites. You were there in Gloucester. There's no other site, other than the site you're saying at O'Malley, that we have not considered, that's city property that we can use. Because Jonathan even tried to negotiate with Greensum over, across from Niles Beach, just to come up with an idea. So to say that every site in Gloucester hasn't been explored, maybe not to the depth that you want about O'Malley, is very unfair to this committee. This process started two years ago and we have come to these options today.
And there's that argument, you've already turned the page, there is that argument. Now we're too far down the road to talk about it.
Wait, no, we could go back, but we already did the work. Why do we need to go back? Why? Because we didn't choose something other than these three plans, do we now have to go backwards?
We never solicited input from the community where they might want this school.
Or five classes of elimination. We went to the pines, oh my God, we filled the room 10 times. So Pines is out. Then we looked at other property that we, the Green Bell, like I said, across from Niles Beach, it's not an option. So where are you saying right now, wholeheartedly, that has not been considered, that we should be looking at for a school? I want that answer now, because I don't know that there is one.
And I don't know either, but we wouldn't know because we've never asked.
The city has done their homework. Jonathan spent hours on this, looking for spots.
I know, I appreciate Jonathan's...
This is an island, we're only so big.
And there's 28,000 of us in Gloucester alone. And there was, you know, a handful of people who...
A handful.
Yeah, a handful worked, they did a lot of work, tried to find, but it does not mean that was the end-all, be-all. And every time...
So you're saying there's other spaces out there that we haven't considered that would be better spots and would be considered?
There may be people that were not on the, that are not employed by the city of Gloucester or not on this committee.
Where on this island are you thinking right now that we have not looked at?
I don't know, because we've never asked.
You don't know? Ask yourself, where is it? Where is it? We're on an island, Joel. They have looked at all the available space.
You're drinking the cooling, that's the...
I'm not drinking the cooling, you're...
We never, we never asked.
Oh my God, that's so bad.
Can we stop campaigning and move forward?
Exactly.
Move the vote.
I move that we recommend, oh, wait, I move that we approve...
I'll tell, I'll tell you what, there's a specific, there's a specific... We have to approve the, to submit a letter to, the approval of the building, to approve to the building committee, to submit a letter to MSBA as outlined in their, on their website. I can read it to you if you'd like. But it's basically is to Mrs. Mary Pritchett, Director of Capital Planning, voting Broad Street in Boston, Massachusetts. It says, dear Mrs. Pritchett, and there's a lot of things that we'd have to fill in. The city of Gloucester, the Gloucester region, Gloucester School District Building Committee has completed review of the preliminary design program for the East Gloucester School Project. And the East Gloucester Project, insert the date, the committee. Yet the School Building Committee voted to approve and authorize the owner's project manager to submit the feasibility study-related materials to the MSBA for consideration of certified copy of the MSBA meeting minutes, which include the specific language of the vote and the number of votes in favor, opposed, and abstained are attached. Okay, since MSBA Board of Directors invited the district to conduct the feasibility study on the date, and the MSBA, and the school building has held the number of meetings that we've had regarding the proposed project compliance with the state open meeting law. These meetings include, and then we would list all the meetings that we've had. And in addition, the School Building Committee meeting listed above, the district held, insert the number of public meetings, which were posted in compliance with the state open meeting law, in which the project was discussed. And then we would list those meetings. And we would list those. The presentation materials of each meeting minutes and summary minutes would be included. And it would be certified, and this is why we need a vote, it would be certified by the mayor, by the superintendent of schools, and by the chair of the school committee.
And I still...
Second.
Further discussion.
I want to, I just want to go back with Michelle a little bit. This is where I'm going bad with this. So help me understand, because I want to support this motion because I truly believe that we're in a process and have been in a process and I don't think that we're leaving anything out. And I think we're limited in our choices. What I struggle with is the fact that we have to come up with this number of nine or eight or whatever we did, when most of them don't have enough parking. Some of them legally, you said, or not legally, but the safety concern of not being able to get a fire engine around a school. I get a little bit lost on why we would have to even submit that as an option when if we can't have parking or we can't have a fire engine go around the school, why would MSBA want us to submit it to begin with? So I guess I'm just a little bit...
So what you're doing, what you're approving really is the submission of those options for further study. You're telling us, go study this option, but this one completely doesn't make sense. See if you can make this one work better. So take this one to the next level. So the next time, for, so for the next, when we hit the midpoint of the preferred schematic report, we'll be looking at nine options that have been further developed. And then from those nine options, you'll be able to assess which one supplies to the top of those nine. So you'll get it down to three or four, and then finally you get to the one, the end of the preferred schematic.
So like in the example where we asked about parking, I think it was at Veterans, and you said there was a retaining wall, but you could move the retaining wall to get more parking and further that way?
Yeah, so the, and then, you know, if the building shifts a little bit so that you can get more parking in or changes the orientation of the classrooms for better daylighting, those kinds of things are those things that happen when we're studying nine and not 14. And then they happen even more when we're studying six and not nine and three and not...
So some of these options that to me seem like just, I'm going to work even if we wanted them to, mean could work upon further review?
Right. And some of them are just options that were required, like capital improvements. You're required to get that baseline to show the MSBA. This is what we have, this is what it costs to fix what we have, and that's your baseline. Thank you.
Any further...
I'm going to support the motion, but I think it's also important to know that when you get those kind of reasonable estimates of one versus another, it's going to help, I think, even the community come along with the process to understand relative costs that, by one option. I mean, obviously, educationally, some of those just don't, it would be a disservice to our kids. But, but I think it's also to have people understand that there are options and certain options have more costs than others.
And we'll have the cost estimates prior to the submission of the PDP. And, but we just want to have the opportunity to leave it with this group because you don't have a meeting before office service.
There's a building committee meeting on July 18th, at which point those costs will be presented, should anybody be interested.
Just one more question to that. On the East Gloucester site, there was, at one point, we were talking about maybe purchasing some land privately, not from where the development's going, but from in a butter. Has that been discussed?
Yeah, so we all walked that portion of the land. And it's quite chilly, quite rocky and, except for the ability to push back on the, on the north part of the site and be able to recreate a portion of that and get some retaining wall and perhaps even that fire exit. Most of that land is not, not practical for us to use on our building. It doesn't really help the building site all that much. We also looked at Expresso's. And even if it was still available, it really is, due to this ginormous rock that's in between us and Expresso's, it really doesn't help with parking or building because it's so segregated for the rest of the site.
Any further discussion?
These are very tired things for a community to deal with. Not just the cost, but the availability of locations is extremely limited. It's going to affect somebody, some of them. We have a national crisis with our, with our school buildings right now. And we're putting... We have a national crisis with our, with our school buildings right now and we're putting our babies in the buildings that are just not optimum habitability. And I think that as a, as a community, we need to figure out how to solve these problems. And it takes, it takes work and it takes people to make hard decisions.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, carries five to one. And we'll move on to the next item. Which is the KPN Study for Education and a study and request for funds. KPN Study for Education is about Rockport. And, and conducting a study for the purpose of exploring regionalization. And it's the, it's in your packet, the, the, I guess it's the RFS. It's, we go into the Donahue Institute, which is part of your master and hers. And they would be conducting the study. There's a timeline attached. We would get a report back. Remember, it's in fall. And we would, at Rockport, and we would sit down and decide what we were going to do with that, how we would move forward. But what is here is a request. I've had conversations with the administration. The administration has said that they would authorize a supplemental appropriation for the cost of this study. So we are, this is just a formal request for that supplemental appropriation. And that's
How did this end up coming to us?
How did it?
Yeah, did we, did we jump to them? I can't.
Yeah. A year and a half ago.
Okay.
You authorized, you authorized me to write a letter to Rockport.
Yes.
Asking to
Which we did.
Which we did.
And so then this ended up happening.
And we waited six months.
Okay.
And then we met with them and they were very resistant to talking about regionalization.
Exactly.
We really weren't going to fund this study that didn't. So
So this is the study?
This is, this is the compromised RFS that we agreed to, which does include financial implications of regionalization. And from here on in, once that study goes back, then it will be an open meeting. It'll be, we'll set up some sort of subcommittee to work with that, I believe, is, okay?
Yep.
But it's like I say, this is to authorize, this is to request funding to do the study.
Is the committee that came up the first?
Well, the agreement between Rockport, it was going, it was the chairs and the co-chairs and the superintendents. And I think among, number of the meeting's great box that because he had experience with both school districts. So that's
That's who the committee was?
Well, that's who met. I don't think they have a call to the committee.
Yeah, they do, they call it. And then they talked about committee being formed later too?
Yeah, but there'll be a committee formed that's formal and will, it'll be open meeting from here on in.
And this study will be in time to think about facilities. I see March next year.
Yeah.
Be by, by summer next year, the final should be.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Yep.
But just, just to, just to talk to the people in Manchester and talk about the process that they went through with Essex. And essentially what happens is the two communities sit down and hammer out an agreement. And it took them five years.
Was there votes by the community?
There's votes by the community. There's all of those things. It's, this is just the, once again, this is just
Well, they won't have time, yes, like, and so their, their structure is worked out.
Yeah, exactly.
Case for a round here.
But
It's still, it's still a lot of time.
So do we have a motion?
I move that we recommend to the city council to fund the KPN Study for Education, CASA study.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. We will now look at the Gloucester High School Student Handbook. And I believe, did we get a cover letter of the changes?
Yes, a summary of the changes per se.
Separately. It's not part of the packet.
Alright. You can't be power pointed.
You don't have to.
Everybody has a copy to look at.
Yeah.
Okay. So just going to go through then, the summary of changes. And with a brief rationale for each of the changes. Page 11, under graduation requirements. First of all, I should say that the big part of the process was the review with the Site Base Council. So Willow Phoenix, who was here earlier, was one of the members, student members of the Site Base Council. And that review was incredibly helpful along with input from the faculty and administrators, as well as other community members along the way. So page 11, graduation requirements. Added a sentence after the graduation requirements that only students who have completed 150 credits and all other GHS graduation requirements will have the opportunity to participate in the graduation ceremony. Although this has been practiced for many years, there are still members of the community who remember a time, sometime in the past, when students were allowed to participate in graduation without completing their graduation requirements. And so it gives a surprise to some people when that's not the case. And it hasn't been for many years, at least six years. But by putting it into the handbook, we'll be able to state it openly and publicly that that is the requirement. Notice that it does say GHS graduation requirements. Students do participate in the graduation ceremony if they have not completed the state's requirement of passing the MCAS. As long as they participate in the local, as long as they completed the local requirements, 150 credits and the specific courses, they participate in our graduation, but they don't receive a diploma at that time until they complete their MCAS. Clarification there. On page 12, in our mid-year and final exam policy, this is another clarification. You'll see highlighted language that says, so something that currently exists, has for many years, missing an exam with unexcused absence will result in a zero on the missed exam. Accordingly, leaving an exam early without permission will also result in a zero. Sometimes kids will say, "About your grade," and not come back to the exam. Twenty minutes and a half hour in. So this is another, it helps with parent communication about those highly, it counts for a lot in the year and the final exam, 10% of the grade, and it's an extremely important time of year. One of the most focused and academically rigorous times of the year. So this helps communicate the expectations. On page 13, grade change forms. This was something that in the past, when we had an assistant principal, the assistant principal approved. For the current year, it was changed to be approved by the principal. However, that's work that the coordinator of school council and the head of guidance. This is the best position I have on a regular basis. So we're changing, those grade change request forms are approved by the coordinator of school council. Page 15, schedule for days with extended homeroom. In the year coming, we will have days in which, in order to fulfill our school committee approved improvement plan, our NIESC plan and our turnaround plan, which we'll hear about more later. We need some time with students to work on some of our social emotional goals, to provide them with some more guidance about post-secondary outcomes. Try to build time into the day where we can have our assemblies with students, so it's not taking time away from classes as much. So we have these days where we have extended homeroom. So I've added that schedule. Take a look up here. It's 43 minute classes. Instead of 45 minute classes and one long block, classes of 43 minutes, we take the extra time we've taken and we create a 34 and an extended homeroom.
So we're going to have extended homeroom every day?
Nope. It's once every three days in a cycle. And this is something that comes highly recommended from NIESC and from the turnaround team. It allows us to get at some of our social emotional objectives, school climate and culture issues, post-secondary, you know, guidance, working with students on the post-secondary outcomes. Students reflecting on SMART goals that they set for themselves.
Does it consider time on margins?
It is, yes, it is. Absolutely, 100%.
So can you just walk third circle student what they would do during this?
Sure, yeah. So I could give you a range of the sorts of things that might happen. So on a day where we give a progress report, a student uses a one-to-one Chromebook. They go to a Google form that's pushed out to them through a Google classroom. And they answer some questions reflecting on their performance on intern one, say, in all their courses. The Google form helps them then set a goal, a SMART goal, a measurable goal for improvement over the second half of the term. That gets submitted by each of the students and then you get, for all students at each grade level, you get a spreadsheet that has their goals in it and something that students can refer to and track progress with over the course of the year. On another day, say freshmen, for example, who are getting used to some of the expectations in the building, their first several homerooms may be a combination of time in the auditorium, say 15 minutes with the dean, the principal, the auditorium, going over some expectations. And then facilitated by homeroom teachers in the cafeteria, they're in at different tables, doing some more hands-on work on, say, using their handbook to record their, the homework for the day, like getting used to using their planner for the day. Or getting some more feedback from the peer. We've trained some students in kind of peer interventions. So we'd have time for the peer interventions. On another day, guidance will, four guidance counselors will go into four of the senior homerooms on this particular day to work on some college planning stuff, while the others might have an activity where they're working on college and other post-secondary applications. And then that four becomes the next four homerooms over a couple of cycles. So those are a few of the examples of the kinds of things they would be working on.
So who are the homeroom teachers accountable to make sure these, this block is productive every time they have done?
Yeah. So the teachers are implementing some, you know, something that's set up for them to do during this time. So just like, it's a professional responsibility, right? The homeroom is a professional responsibility. Classes, someone teaches are a professional responsibility. The duty that a teacher has in three days out of a seven-day cycle is a professional responsibility. The PLCs they're involved with. So it's another professional responsibility that the administration oversees.
So would be you and the
And the dean, yes.
So that before the year happens, you have a plan of what
That's right. Yes. And so, for example, that plan will be extremely specific for the first term and then we'll have some goals. You know, for instance, we're going to be working on some school climate and culture diversity programming that is not ready for the first term, but, you know, that we'll have that as a target for later in the year and will fully be able to have that plan, technical plan ready to go. Summer reading is another thing. You know, summer reading discussions in some form, teachers have done for years and they'll continue to do during this time. That sort of thing.
And last, second question is, so are there no more long blocks? Is that?
Just on the day that we have the extended homeroom. On the other days, we have, it's just the current schedule. So on the days that we have the extended homeroom, every third day,
Yeah.
there is no
No long block.
No long block. You have regular 43 minute classes on the days we have the homeroom. No long block on the other days, as normal as we have. Okay, moving on, move on to the next. Page 25, Gloucester High School Guidelines for Formal Writing. We, most students are getting guidance for formal writing online. The MLA, Modern Library Association, the APA formats, those get updated regularly. So if we put it down in writing in the handbook, I think it's updated in the middle of the year. Kids are going to the website anyway to check it. So what we've done in the handbook is made a very short passage with the websites that are most helpful for formal writing assignments. And we've gotten rid of the next several pages, the next two pages of guidance. The guidance that's there is from the MLA 7, it's already in MLA 8. So rather than updating MLA 8 and waiting for MLA 9 for the websites now. But it's been there, Joel, since you were there. Not the MLA 7, we've updated which MLA, but this section, this is a quite old section. But we're now doing digital for it. Alright, page 31, absences. We realized this year that we, when we talk about a list of excused absences, we do excuse four college visits a year, about the four college visits. But what we really need to say is college or other post-secondary institution. My vocational students are checking out some vocational programs and so on. Obviously, we can permit them to have those as excused absences, but we need to say so to make that clear. So we've done that. On page 34, I reviewed some, the last 10 years or so of old handbooks. And I found several times prior principals writing a mark in the margin to update this policy. And it never quite happened, so we're doing it now. So this policy, we're adjusting the dates here. If a student acquires more than six unexcused absences, six unexcused parties to school, this is number six, we use elsewhere in the policy, in the attendance policy, or two cuts in an academic quarter, he or she will be ineligible to participate in all co-curricular or extracurricular activities in the remainder of that term. You'll see below that the number has been three for all of those things. And it's become, it's been extremely difficult for more than a decade to enforce. And so six brings it in line with practice and policy in other areas and we reduce the number of cuts. So the kids cut class twice, they probably shouldn't be in the play or in the play representing us on the field somewhere. So we made that change.
So, you know, we've talked, I've had people give me concern about this term, unexcused absence, as it relates to just my child was sick. And I think we've talked a little, you know, I've talked a little bit about this of trying to explain that unexcused for illness is kind of a normal absence, right? But I think parents feel that that term of unexcused is a negative, has a negative connotation. And so I just want the administrators to think about, is there a better word? Because we know the intent. We know that it's normal and predictable that kids will be sick sometimes and there are reasons they're out that are, you know, that are expected. As opposed to like a college visit is an excused absence because it's, you're excusing it because it's also academically related. Where the others are kind of typical absences. That, right? So
Oh, you're
So I pushed that back to you guys to think about over the summer because every year, somebody says to me, "Oh my God, my kid was sick and they told me he had an unexcused absence, but I called him in sick." I gave, you know, and so that's my request. Can we please find a word, a phrase that's not, that people don't freak that out? Thank you.
Yeah, definitely do that. Yeah. We've, so we also looked in the course of the process, we looked at these three other handbooks from similar kinds of schools. So we'll see if there's some term that's been used by another school that runs to the same issue. Office detentions. On page 37, students will receive an obligation for unserved detentions, which must be fulfilled before students can participate in co-curricular or extracurricular activities. So this is a way I would So this is a way I've run into a problem with, you know, students not necessarily serving all their detentions, accumulating detentions, and this is a way to make sure they do. Other than having an out-of-school suspension as a result, which is not really what we want, you know, we want to remove them from school for not serving the detention services. Having an obligation is another way to do it. It's really useful when prom comes around, the sophomore event and that sort of thing. So those are the kinds of things we have in mind. Page thirty-seven, out-of-school suspension. It's just an added clarification. Student may not participate in school curricular or extracurricular activities until the student has returned to school following the suspension. In other words, if the student is suspended on Friday, say, and the game or play is Saturday, they're also not be able to participate at that time till they come back to school. That's current practice, but it just clarifies that practice. Page thirty-eight, a lot of the work, we, that went into this, because Show Up is a lot of work, was into designing the in-school suspension. You'll probably remember that we did receive a grant this year to start an in-school suspension program. Something we put into the budget originally, but we're gonna take it out because it's grant-funded. So our in-school suspension program is PACE, Positive Alternative Consequences and Education Program. It'll run during the day. Similar to an out-of-school suspension, if a student is in-school suspension, they can't participate in extracurricular activities that day. The PACE program is designed as an in-school program, provides students facing disciplinary consequences with an alternative to an out-of-school suspension. The alternative allows students to stay, keep engaged in classwork and to address the underlying issues related to the violation of school policies. It's similar to the past program that we've been part of this year. And so we're bringing that in-house year coming. We're very excited about this. It allows to do a lot of things and keep students more engaged in learning when they're facing consequences instead of sending them home where you can't control the educational outcomes. Page thirty-eight, we, one of the handbooks we looked at listed some other consequences. Currently, we have, you know, we say that we can consider other consequences, but we thought that looking at some of the other handbooks, it might be powerful to say what some of the other consequences might be, such as loss of privilege to attend or participate in school activities, parking privileges, technology restrictions, I'm not being allowed to attend field trips as examples.
What is the technological researches?
So, for example, we can, through IT, we can say that you can access the Google Suite to do like your Google Classroom and stuff, but you can't do other searches online.
Searches?
So that may be because a student has violated the, our internet use policy. So they may not be able to?
Is there ever a time that kids are required to do searches for homework?
So we can include whatever the sites are that the teacher is saying to?
Oh, this was like?
Yeah, and we've done this a couple of times already, and they're really good. We're able to do a lot of cool things to place relevant restrictions that get at what a student is wrong. And then we lift them after a time, just like we would with the suspension. But we do keep very close eye on not asserting their work.
Okay.
Alcohol controlled substances, you'll see here we've added or paraphernalia in here, which is very helpful for the vaping devices and so on, we see a lot of devices.
Can you come up with a list for paraphernalia? Because that covers a lot of things, some illegal, some aren't, just to be more specific. I mean, I think like vaping devices and things like that, don't you have to be eighteen or if not twenty-one now? Did the law change in December?
Well, we need to restrict them in school.
Right, but you have on the way to school, which is not on the school grounds. So I'm just trying to think of a situation down the road where we could be challenged. So maybe some sort of list of what paraphernalia is, you know, specific.
Yes.
Is there some things that may be legal that you don't wanna see? Or there may be things that are illegal regardless, and we should have the school resource officer involved?
Yeah, I'm not saying elsewhere in the policy, right, it's their role, the police role is there. Like this is just an addition.
Because they changed law on paraphernalia for adults in the courts, where you're not charged with a lot of things now, so I just wanna make sure that we're not?
I think what I'd be comfortable with is making it clear that that refers to in-school.
Okay, because you have on the way to?
And then we get to decide, you know, what devices are related to paraphernalia in school.
But you have on the way to or?
Exactly, yeah, so I can pull out that paraphernalia and put it in a separate line that only refers to in-school, in-school grounds, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, that's great.
In the next section, you'll see that in the grid, mostly what's happened there is in-school suspension has been added in various places in the grid where it's appropriate. So throughout our discipline grid, you'll see the inclusion now of in-school suspension. A few other adjustments in length of detention, but mostly what's happened there is in-school suspension has been handled as an option. Some questions about the in-school suspension? This is kind of the, it's the most exciting drop. We have to keep it in school, we have to deal with some internal issues, so.
We've been talking about it a lot, the funniest item, right? When the, when it came through from the grant?
Yes, we did talk about it already, right?
Not lack of interest.
Okay. On page eighty-three?
Suspension for Vacation.
I know.
Of this often with?
Yeah.
It's a lot of video gambling that happens, we hear, when kids are home. Co-curricular activities, the Gay Straight Alliance has changed its name to Sexuality and Gender Acceptance Saga. Probably maybe seen some of the events that they sponsored, so we're reflecting that change in the co-curricular activities. We've added Sail GHS to our co-curricular activities. They've been part of the school for a while, we don't wanna get them in there. Just noticed that change over the course of the year. Page eighty-four, we had prior language that students are not eligible to practice, perform, or play on any day that they're marked absent or tardy, and we're adding cut class or leave school grounds without permission. A student may, a class cut technically, it is an absence, but in code in the computer, it's a CC, a cut of class. And students may leave school grounds without permission during, say, lunchtime. But that's not marked as an absence, right? So we have to account for that happens this year, we wanna account for that in the policy. School dress code. So mostly what we did here is we trimmed redundant language, and we made sure it went through each point of the OMALE policy and made sure our policy was consistent with the OMALE policy that was presented two weeks ago. So that we're using similar language. We elaborate on a few things, a little bit more than OMALE did, but we have all the points from the OMALE policy here, in this policy as well. So we're consistent with that. That took a lot of work to cut this down and to make sure it was consistent. We've updated the driving regulations here, you can see, it's a new language. Most of it has to do with what happens if students violate different parts of driving and partnership.
Fats, right?
What's up?
It's just a typo.
It's a big typo.
It's under the following?
That's to be removed, right?
To be removed?
Okay.
And I think it's probably?
Oh, it's coming out. I think it was a scan issue, but. I was reading the word fats instead of hats.
Oh, nice.
I was concerned what that meant. It says fat slash vice.
Yeah, it's coming out.
Is there something else?
Yeah.
No, it's just that thing in mind. All right. Any questions about the dress code? Straight forward. Page ninety-three, the National Honor Society, the National Honor Society is considering some changes to eligibility policy, so I wanted to make, and they're allowed to do that based on our charter, this is the process that students get to vote on, and then the faculty council have to approve it, and I ultimately have to approve any changes. So since they are considering some changes, I wanted to make sure that's reflected in the handbook, but how a change gets made, in importance with the local and national charter. We've added the security cameras in schools and buses protocol. And finally, we're also adding the hazing, MGL, Act prohibiting the practice of hazing, anti-hazing law. This will streamline our requirement the state has to make sure all students involved in extracurricular activities and so on get this policy, so we'll give them to all students. It just streamlines that process. Section two, which one? So that's all the changes.
Any questions on the pages?
I make a move that we approve the changes to the foster high school handbook. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
And we will move on to? The budget.
No, you know, it's our brother, we're just doing the same thing, go up, we're still up here.
All right, sorry.
Just doing the same thing.
All right, I was looking at action. Could be just head action, so you're still up.
All right, all right, as I mentioned, the?
You want the executive summary of the lesson?
Yes. Okay, so we've been talking about this for a while, and we've been keeping an eye on this as we worked on the other two plans, the school improvement plan that this committee accepted and the NEASC growth plan, and this turnaround plan all need to fit together. When I presented on this topic earlier in the year, presenting the improvement plan, I may have mentioned that the turnaround plan would articulate a little bit more precisely things about instructional practice, right, that the focus would be on further articulating improvements in instructional practice and what should be focused on. So what you'll see here primarily is the use of the building leadership team that already exists as an instructional leadership team, with particular time designated at each meeting to deal with instructional practices. Those instructional practices will be focused on student engagement and higher order. So you've seen that at all the plans all along, that's really what we're going for. We want to engage students, incite them about learning, get them hands-on activities, project-based learning, inquiry-based learning, and then through that engagement, challenge them to evaluate, to analyze, to create, do the higher orders that they think that's needed, you know, even all the work that we all do in our labs. That would be the focus of the instructional learning. The other part of that is, in a school that has, as you've heard over and over again, an increasingly high number of high-needs students, how do we make sure higher order? What does higher order thinking look like with struggling learners? With students who have some gaps in, you know, what they, in the skills they come into the high school with? So the, the school growth team, we currently have eight school growth teams. So a new school growth team will look at effective inclusion practices. How do we get to these goals in inclusive classroom? What are the special scaffolding, the differentiation that's required to help students achieve the higher order thing? That, in all of our plans, is necessary. So other parts of the plan, I talk about the role of the PLCs, who are a huge part of it. The teachers have been engaged in this work for embedding higher order thinking in student engagement in curricula. That's been the focus of the rest of my, first three years as principal, so that will continue. And the real work happens with the professional learning communities, that teachers are, teachers run, they're part of, overseen by the leadership team, but they are the experts on the ground, both in terms of pedagogy and in terms of content. So this plan calls for a focus of the PLCs on student engagement and higher order thinking for all students, really focusing on, how does, what does that look like for struggling learners? You know, students with high needs. You'll see, and again, I'm just kinda giving a summary here of the things. Part of what you just heard about for higher needs are interventions. So the plan calls for early warning and interventions for students who have social emotional struggles and who have academic gaps in their learning. So improving the interventions that we have for students and expanding interventions we have, which also hopefully will keep students from, are increasing special education numbers, which is not as we can talk about a lot, right? It's why, you know, as a district, we have a higher, approximately ninety percent above the state average of high school in the way of students with special needs. So how are there interventions, universal interventions we can make to prevent that number from growing? That's built into the plan here as well. And then you'll see also that there's a renewed focus on the freshman transition into the high school. Using, as I mentioned earlier, that homeroom time that we talked about for a freshman orientation program, working with the eighth-grade counselors and the student study team to identify rising ninth graders. We are to do this, but to strengthen the process where we identify rising ninth graders who may experience difficulties in providing them with support when they come to the high school. And to explore the idea of a freshman academy, which again, has been the goal of one of the school growth teams, but this plan continues that exploration of a freshman academy where particular teachers may focus on ninth-grade students as a way to facilitate that transition from eighth grade into ninth grade. Because it's such an area of difficulty for our students, it has meant for, it's a continuing challenge. We see higher rates of retention, higher rates of absenteeism among the freshmen. So the plan, the last part of this coming, this targets that area.
Joel?
So first, I just wanna say I'm glad to hear the focus of this transition because I feel like, as you noted for a long time, the shift from eighth to ninth grade, it's like you skipped a gear or something, and you know, it's kind of a shock sometimes to some of the students. What I'm curious about is, to improve instruction, you're going to eliminate at least one track of classes. What does that mean?
So what we've been doing over time is phasing out what are called CP2 classes. So we, so for instance, now, for instance, in science, we don't have, past the ninth grade year, we have college preparation classes, we don't differentiate between a college preparation one and a college preparation two class.
CP2 is formerly career prep, right?
That's a long time ago, Joel, you're going way back yet. So, and it's not just a name change, right? The goal is that over the course of the four years, a student in college preparation two has the skills necessary to access post-secondary education by the time they're a senior. So the goal is different than the career prep track, not just the name change.
The management ability grouping, at least on paper, goes that there's a sense of proportion between expectations for students and what they can accomplish. The downside is that it can sort of create expectations for certain groups that are not as challenging as they can be. This is not ongoing conversation, it's gone off for a long time, and I'm not quite sure of the answer. I don't know that full heterogeneity in high school is viable, especially in math and some of the sciences, but the extent to which there's some reduction, hopefully, will act as a catalyst so that the expectations for all students and increasingly more diverse population will strengthen. That's the?
So what we found is that in the CP2 classes, there, and this is through NEASC observations, through the term site visit, and through some survey data from the faculty, we found that higher order thinking is less emphasized, there are fewer opportunities in CP2-level classes. So rather, so what we wanna see is scaffold it to help get to higher order thinking rather than a focus on remembering and understanding, which are the lower-level skills. So there's a one way to do that is?
So, and may I miss the answer? So if I'm a student who otherwise previously would have hit a CP2 math class because I just really have difficulty with math, and then I say, well, CP2 is gone, so CP? because I just really have difficulty with math, and then I said, well CP2 is gone, so CP1, which previously was beyond my reach, enough like of trying, just beyond my reach, that I wasn't ready for it. And now I'm kind of thrown into this CP1 course, I have no CP2 option. It's, you're saying there's, the support systems elsewhere are going to allow me to keep my head above water?
The detail, right, this is one sentence that has a ton of detail, because high schools are complicated. So in math particularly, that's the area where there are the biggest gaps and the most need for sequential learning, right? So in English class, for instance, you're going to be repeating the same, you're going to be doing some reading, right? You're going to be doing notes on that reading and you're going to be writing about it. So, so you can keep catching that skill. In math where there's steps, it's more difficult. So we're, we don't right now have a plan to eliminate different math classes. So, so I mean, what does that look like? So in the year coming, our upper level math classes, years three and four, we also won't have college prep two classes, but what we will still have is we will still have some, like applied, applied math classes and, you know, some things that meet kids where they are, right? But we're not calling them college prep two classes. But in the sequence of learning math skills, we're going to meet the kids where they are. And what we need to explore is, is it possible, right? There's a lot of debates still about what that looks like in ninth and tenth grade for the reasons you just articulated, right? So, so we're eliminating, we're reducing the amount of strategically saying like, can we, in a senior English class, which is something we just did, get rid of the college prep two level? And say that, okay, at this point, for seniors, everybody here is going through three years of foster high school and can access a pre-college, right, a build-up to college level English class? And we say, yep, yeah, we think that, we, we're ready for that, so we eliminated that lower level there maintaining high expectations for students. In certain areas, particularly as you gave a math example, we're saying, no, we can't do that right now. We need that differentiated level because what's been taught in that class is necessary for where those kids, where their skills are. Does that make sense? Like, trying to kind of look at each area to say, can we consolidate or eliminate a level here? And this is not, as I said, I said, this is not a process we're doing alone, you know, they're, like, I went on a NEAS site visit to Reading this year and they, just, they're going through this process and as a community figuring out, do they need to add some levels back in, in certain cases?
Just to follow up on that, so, and I think pushing the wisdom, I'm just curious as to, you know, again, I'm a rising junior, I otherwise, you know, would have been a CP2, English 11, CP2, English 11 disappears. And whereas I was, you know, a BB plus CP2 student, now I'm throwing up a level and unless there's something else helping me now, you know, swim in a stronger current, now all of a sudden I'm a C minus, C student, CP, and now I'm discouraged in a different way. I'm taking harder, I'm taking better courses, but my grades are worse, so I still feel.
That's easy, yeah, that's an easy answer. I mean, it's about, so we have the district's curriculum combination plan, the ECAP, which I'm familiar with, that this, which includes scaffolding and differentiation, right? So, so what we need all kids to be able to do as seniors is access post-secondary learning, right? You're going to go, you're going to always start coming to college, you're going to be asked to first pass an ability to benefit test, right, the acuplacer, so you've got to be prepared for this, non-negotiable, we have to prepare you for that. So how do we get you there as a junior in that CP class? You, maybe you need, as the student you just described, needs a bit more scaffolding. So, so I'm giving you a, an outline for completing the essay you need to complete. So you've got a model, you've got an outline, right? This student, in the gradual release of responsibility, does, has a model, they don't need the outline anymore. So I'm taking that away from that student, because I know my learners, I pre-test them, I know who the elementary teachers do this stuff all the time in their differentiated classes, right?
Sure, sure.
Right? We need to do more of that, is the best way to explain that, right? We're going to give different scaffolding to different students in that room with the goal being success on that acuplacer, success in a college classroom, good grip to read the textbook and answer the questions and so on. And that's the non-negotiable, right? We have to get them there, but how we get them there is going to look different, just like it does in elementary schools.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
So at the elementary schools, I know we talked a lot for a long time about getting our grades higher and the whole evaluation of looking at primarily, you know, the MCAS and seeing what questions or topics within the test we were weak on versus others. And we then, you know, got into the BSRI and we started doing a lot of work with the teachers to look at those questions and how they were teaching those particular concepts. And we've made significant process, progress. Have, do we have a regular process of that for, and I realize MCAS is one measure, but I would love to know, is there a correlation between grades a kid achieves in his ELA class as a freshman and sophomore and how he performs on the MCAS? Are we, are we teaching the right things? And if we are, then that satisfies that question that could interfere with achievement. And then the second thing is what you're looking at is, are we, how are we teaching it? How are we teaching it in the most effective way? So I'm curious about that. Third, I mentioned BSRI, and I hate to bring it up, but can we do this? We know from our experience with the elementary, it's a lot of hard work and we brought in an outside consultant to help with some of that hard work.
Yep, so I can answer both of those questions? So I'll answer the second one first. So the, one, an equivalent or parallel to basic reading would be, we're working with keys to literacy right now in our social studies and English classes. One of the things we really emphasize is social studies will need to carry on some of the burden, right? Of that, maybe in the past, you would assign a paper in history. We know we need to teach, that the history teacher also needs to teach the students how to write that paper. They're not just assessing content in history, they're helping the students improve their reading and improve their writing. So, so in parallel, so the English teachers and social studies teachers are working together with keys to literacy. Ninth and tenth grade teachers last year, that's, ninth and tenth grade teachers will have their second year next year and the eleventh, twelfth grade teachers will have their first year. So we'll keep rolling it as we emphasize, so it's kind of similar and, you know, to basic reading. And so that's one, you know, one way we're addressing it. There are other similar kinds of things happening, you know, planned for the other departments as well. Who's, so to answer your first part of the, part of professional learning community work, PLC work, is that teachers analyze data, all of our, our MCAS scores, we analyze the scores, we analyze what areas our students most successful in, where are their areas of weakness? Where does that translate that into our curriculum, right? Is there something we should change in our curriculum based on the data that we got from the state? And those are, happen every, every year as part of analysis. And actually, if you dig, this is the summary, but the plan, that PLC work is the data analysis and then the updating of curriculum and then the updating instructional practices to promote the higher order thinking. One of the areas that students, not just foster high school students, struggle with is in the open responses, right? Where you're asked to think about, you're given some problem to solve or you're asked to think about the science content or the English content, the math content, and explain yourself, right? So a lot of the reason, you know, the plan we're emphasizing higher order thinking skills for all students, not just memorization and understanding, is to, is for that reason, based on prior data analysis. And actually, the keys to literacy emphasis came from the English department's analysis of like where are kids not doing so well on local assessments and on the MCAS? And they decided that this keys to literacy work with collaboration, social studies department is what they wanted to do to help move that, so, so, yes.
Can I get one more question?
Sure.
Do, part of that evaluation of ninth grade, are they feeling that our eighth graders that are rising into freshmen aren't performing where they would expect them to as they enter high school? Because I want to think about how we're vertically sending kids through. We know we're doing pretty good in the elementary school and so always that transition, but also the progression through school.
So teachers did raise concerns about that, how's, how prepared our students? Not always with underlying skills. So a lot of work has been done in social studies and English, to focus on those, or, it's fresh in my mind, but I can talk about the other areas as well. But in, they added benchmarks for writing and for reading comprehension, that was so helpful. It's fresh in my mind because I was talking with a rising parent just this afternoon about information dichotomy and concerns dichotomy, a eighth grade teacher about that rising student. Super helpful, right, and helped with that transition. So we're getting more of that, they're assessing more of that, not just relying on MCAS as one measure, but benchmarking students. And so, so that, but the concerns that teachers in the high school expressed in surveys and in the building leadership team really had to do with study habits, seriousness about engagement, willingness to engage and the challenges in higher order thinking, right? That when you're problem solving, mostly you get things wrong. And persistence, right, is extremely important, just settling for the first answer that comes to mind, like that sort of thing, resilience and persistence. And so there's a lot of talk about the soft skills, which is related to what we, you know, this extended home room. Those are the kinds of things that we want to address school-wide as part of our school culture, is the resourceful resilience at the same time, right? To support students in that way, at the same time they're experiencing higher rates of anxiety about school and this sort of thing. So we know we need to, the soft skills are so important as much as the reading comprehension skills.
Thank you.
So, just trying to have a, figure out a phrase, I've been on the school committee for 12 years. When we first got on, the high school was here, level one. Now we're down here. Omele has been in a shift, but the shift doesn't seem to be going in the trajectory that we want to from what I'm hearing about the scores at Omele. Has there been a discussion with administration, not, because I'm not just saying it's just the high school, to me, there's a after elementary school problem. We had a problem with elementary, like Kathy was bringing up, we brought in BSRI, that was very successful. We looked at best practices in other districts and we fixed that. It seems to me now we have an after elementary problem, not just the high school. So has there been a discussion amongst administration on to look at what has happened and where, why we have fallen? Now, we've always been a community that's had higher special ed, so we can't use that really for an excuse. And most communities are increasing in their special ed. I mean, the tech isn't far behind us in their figure, you know what I mean? And they're still a level one school, so.
Well, there's been a change, remember, in, I mean, the first part I can answer, we no longer have the levels of schools. So one of the things that happened is a shift in the report card. We were a level two school.
We were a level one at the high school.
Years ago, right?
When I was here, yeah.
Years ago, right? And then over the course of the last several years, right? And we were a level two school before that, we bumped up briefly to level one, we've been a level two school. And we were a level two school last year.
Okay.
Right? So if, part of what changed is the emphasis in the model has shifted to focus on the students with the highest needs. They're, they're factored in more in the equation.
So you just brought up a good point. We're level two, which doesn't sound bad, sounds great, but why on the report card are we the lowest 10% to have in the state? Because that doesn't sound great, so where am I missing the connection there?
Two, two things, one, as I said, is the emphasis of, so if in these other years, the emphasis had been where it was, some of these problems may, may have seemed more prominent, right? Because it's a different formula, right? The other part is that, remember, as I've explained a couple different times, we had a giant increase in the number of language learners. We went from four to more than 20.
But not the community that too.
Right, but no, no, not that kind of, so, not four to.
So with the largest community of ELL?
Not, so, remember, they're comparing one year to the, as I've shown a couple of times, one year to the next year. They're not doing a trend and we don't know what's coming. So comparing this year to next year will have a more similar number of English language learners taking the test. And we had a giant jump on the year they happened to pick to start the new system.
Okay.
To compare one year to just one year. Statistically, as I hear all the time from the faculty, we're like, statistically, it's not, the best way to do statistics to compare one thing to one year, two data points, right, one year, next year. So we know we have this shift. The opportunity is to look at, how do we improve, how do we use something like a turnaround plan? How do we use NEAS coming in and observing our classes? Go back to elementary school, right? So the spotlight was on the elementary schools, right, spotlight's on us. And so how do we respond to that? So we get some resources, right? We get a visit from NEAS, we get a visit from the turnaround site visit team, we have consulting, we're working with them in French. We implement things like keys to literacy as our equivalent of BSRI. How do we continue to, the social studies department takes more ownership of literacy along with English departments. We're doubling the amount of literacy instruction kids are getting. As a school-wide goal, we have higher order thinking and engagement through inquiry as a goal we've had for three years to get students to perform better on these assessments, right? Regardless of what level they're at, right, that they want them to be doing higher order thinking, because that's going to be assessed, that's the kind of thing.
So let me ask you this, that, that's a great explanation, I appreciate it because I feel better about it already. I think the numbers are deceiving for us, unfortunately, put us in a less of a light when there's really good things going on here, so I appreciate that explanation. My second question is, all the stuff you're talking about sounds great. Talk to me about teacher buy-in into the PLCs and wanting to do all this work. Because in another world that I sit in here on the committee, where in our negotiations and things, we hear a lot of complaints and, and questioning of processes. Everything you say, everything you're saying sounds great if there's teacher buy-in. So I'm curious to know if you have it and how you got it and do you think it's sustainable before it's completed?
Yeah. So, you know, all the NEAS work is, we've used this consensus protocol to make sure there's actually buy-in on each step of the process, right? So we have the work you did like in October, first part of the year with the NEAS visit. So using consensus protocols on the building leadership team, all at the high school, all the program leaders are teachers, right, they're, and when they break out into the PLCs, that is, it has to be at the high school level, there's so much content specialization, like work that all the teachers are engaged with. So they're saying, yep, a common curriculum, common assessments are something we need, so we're aware we need to be working on that in our PLCs.
Your teachers are looking at data and then develop.
Making adjustments to practice.
Making adjustments.
Making regular practice, yeah. There, there's some ways that.
Processing, that's a way.
Yeah, yeah, processing. So PLC is really valuable, you know, it's one of the most valuable tools we have that other schools don't have that time built into the day.
Right.
That's one of the things that everybody that comes and visits says that. And, you know, that, that was something that was asked for by teachers many years ago. So we're not spending, teachers didn't want to be spending all the time, I'll say hour, so teachers have that time, you know, monitoring the hallway and that sort of thing, but let's use some of that time for these professional outcomes. So that's really beneficial. And then if we go to the turnaround plan, so not only do we have the building leadership team, which is primarily comprised of teachers who are program leaders, but we also included the two NEAS chairs, who are teachers who are not program leaders, are also part of that decision-making block. And they far dwarfed three administrators on the team in terms of like deciding, so with the ninth grade focus, that was a teacher-driven idea, like that we need to prove there. The problem with attendance, that if you, you look at the plan closely, a lot of what we're doing, the student engagement and with the ninth grade transition is really directed at getting kids in the building, right? Because you can't teach them if they're not there, teachers are really mindful about that, right? We can't be, we don't have them, my best strategy is not going to work. And then this focus on higher order thinking, again, some of the faculty who believes in it, that that's the transferable skill to leave us, what are they going to be asked to do? What gives them the most ability to author their own future for themselves?
And through all these adjustments, my final question real quick. The adjustments that you're making to put in the scaffolding or whatever you were calling it, the support, you're not taking away anything for those that want a stronger rigor? I just need to get that.
Yes, yeah, so, so what's really, one of the positive things, one of the things we get really well on in the report card is our AP involvement. We've increased tremendously, I can see, you know, the numbers when I brought them, over the last, you know, many years. We've got a real focus, we have more and more kids involved in advanced classes. Not just advanced classes, but, you know, so there's AP and then there's, you know, year four of vocational program or the most advanced engineering program, if it's not AP, or the most advanced art classes we have. To make sure kids are accessed and a big challenge at the highest levels, you know, that's, and with higher. And that's one of the great things, but by focusing on, on higher order thinking and student engagement, we're looking at growth wherever you are. It could be someone who's already interested in evaluation and creativity, so we're going to push you. And we're going to push kids who, you know. And we're going to push kids who, you know, maybe are more comfortable with, you know, the remembering and understanding skills, and push them to do analysis and evaluation and those things.
Thank you very much, appreciate the calls and responses.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, the turnaround plan is not something that we, is approved by the state, not us. It's not up for approval. But it was helpful to understand it.
There are clinical goals throughout the turnaround plan, we have a blast portion of it, and for the local school committee, it might be viable to have the principal and/or representative group come in and report out on the visual goals that they pursue from course in year. The purpose amongst many is the fact that, that leads the question of the whole of the plan. The piece of urgency is what needs to be understood and adopted. We don't like negative reinforcement, being told everyone's in the 10th percentile is not as good as hearing something much more positive and reacting to that. But with that said, we need to ensure that there's a strong sense of urgency in the building and across the district with respect to moving these things forward. So the extent to which that we are reporting out to one another and sharing information may contribute to that, again, sense of urgency.
Okay, and now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, I have a few things to do. And I would like to just sort of go back to the retreat that we had last Thursday on June 20th, which was dedicated, dedicated almost entirely to the issue of safety. Play the role, so this is for...
Play the role.
Yeah. Yeah. Hope you're laughing, I'm crying. A great time. What was interesting about it? Anybody else want to split? No, I'm not feeling the safety, where you go?
So how did it go, you ever productive me?
I should never.
You learned a lot the last week.
We had a, we got our emergency management plans, but creating an exercise, what was referred to as a tabletop exercise, and really going through the pieces and, you know, what happens if, that was very helpful. It was a dark and stormy morning, there was a gas leak, we went through our emergency procedures, and then there was another piece of the scenario where there was evacuation, but the whole neighborhood then became problematic issues of what do we do then? What do we do with the first school that moved and evacuated? Now they've evacuated to another school, where there's an endangerment, so we have to do something there. The whole issue of reunification came up. And perhaps one of the most important things, which has been a sort of a lingering question, and we do have a meeting on July 2nd with fire, police, DPW, et cetera, is ensuring that there is an incident commander around whom all agencies have an opportunity in the moment, in real time, in an emergency situation, to share information collectively with input from school administrators, so that at that point in time, with all the information together, a decision can be made about whether or not to bring them back in the building, to bring them out of the building, or how to respond to a particular emergency. And we'll be taking that up, as I mentioned, on July the 2nd. So this was a very helpful, I felt it was a very helpful, active, engaged kind of project-based assignment for, for adults. And we came away, as you saw the bullet points when you read the superintendent's report, we came away with a number of particular items that helped flesh out some of the ways in which we will be responding to emergencies, and we'll continue to do that.
More than we thought, as a superintendent's part, say yes or no.
On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, five to zero. Okay, we are going to take out of order, because of the report from the program subcommittee about the wellness and the school store.
Great, I don't have the language.
Michelle has it.
Oh. Okay, so last time we were talking about the school store, one member requested that the students meet again at the wellness committee. So that meeting happened on a week ago Friday, facilitated by James. And there was, I think, a lot of good information shared, and we had programmed last week, so we talked about that, we looked through the notes from the meeting from James. So we have a motion coming forward from that subcommittee meeting that we, we unanimously go to three in favor, zero opposed, direct to the full school committee, that we amend the language of the wellness policy to allow the class of 2020 to run the school store five days a week for the last 15 minutes of the lunch block through the end of September 2019. And I so moved.
Second.
Okay, and the reason for the September time period is that we would like wellness to meet and come back with their recommendations, so that we don't, so we have their input prior to making either permanent change, or what that permanent change in language might be.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Yes.
I think we, rather than change the policy, we should create a waiver. Sam's, it's got a sunset clause in it, and then we'd have to go back and change that in September. Why don't we just make a motion to give, create a waiver of the policy until the end of September with the conditions that you...
I say that.
Acceptable.
That's acceptable, yes.
Can I have a discussion on that amendment?
Yeah, well, we got a, we got a motion of second, yes.
Yeah, I know, but maybe we didn't, the amendment, once, the first issue?
September 4th.
September 4th issue. So, you really only have three weeks to examine, should be the end of September or October?
I thought it was through the end of September. I thought it was through the end of September. It is.
That's what I said, since my question is, it's on the waiver, should we?
Through the end of September. Should it be later than September, should it be October?
What is it we're looking for? You know, I mean, we're going to see, if it, what, you're going to see if it's having a detrimental effect on the food service, what are we looking for?
My, as the maker of the motion originally, coming out of the meeting that was held at the high school, you know, the wellness committee was not going to have an opportunity to meet on this provided recommendation. And I just personally thought it was unfair, the recommending body, if we're going to make it permanent, or at least a year long, you're not hearing from them. We, we have an idea as to what they provided before, how their context, but now I have a very focused thing to examine, what does, how does five days a week, 15 minutes of each lunch jive with the goals of the wellness committee? And, you know, then, maybe this is close enough, they may still have issues with it, but either way, we should have that from them before we make this a permanent thing. And they're supposed to meet at the very beginning of the school year, so we will have two meetings of a full committee to get their wellness committee report into us and decide whether or not we want to take what we've used as a waiver and put it into a language change for the year, or for the policy going forward, or if we want to amend the language differently, or whether we want to let the waiver expire and not be the end of it.
On the amended motion, kind of answer to Tony's concerns. I'm someone that came in not, I didn't, wasn't able to attend, attend the meeting with the students, and I also only received minutes from that meeting that I don't think captured all the conversation of that meeting, because I'm told that there may have been some concerns brought up by a nurse that works in the school, and I didn't see anything that alluded to that in those notes of that meeting. So, I think we need to do something, to, to be clear, I'm in support of having the five days, I'm not trying to stop that, I'm just trying to address other issues. I think we need to have an outcome to this with a timeframe that we can address, allow the kids to do it five days, waive the policy, but in the meantime, we need to hear from all the people involved, student, we heard from the students through notes, but I want to hear from the wellness team personally, whenever it's time. We also heard that there could be an issue with lunches through those notes of not being served the whole time. And also, I know Bill and the finance committee always talks about how the revolving account has to cover all the expenses, and this could have an impact on that. So this is, this conversation is part of a much bigger picture. So while I will agree to the five days as a waiver, I think we are going to need more time to resolve all the issues that this brings forward. But in the meantime, we should let the kids have the 15 minutes for lunch five days a week until we figure everything out. I mean, I'm hearing there's pup tats in vending machines, and to me, that doesn't seem to go with a wellness policy. So there's so much to this issue that needs to be addressed. So I am in favor of the amendment, which is to waive the policy, because I think you're going to find a lot of changes come forward. And to answer Tony's question, we probably are going to need more time than September for these conversations to be had on all levels to figure it out, only because we're not meeting in July, which is okay.
I know, historically, cramming it into the first three weeks of school, it's chaos.
But there's a bigger picture to all this conversation.
But we can always extend the waiver.
Well, I know, why not just?
A waiver until September.
But now we can extend the waiver.
I think October is more than enough time.
Well, like Jonathan said, we can always extend the waiver. So we see where we're going with that. So I'm in favor of the amendment.
What I'm gathering is everybody's in favor of a waiver for a period of time. It's just a question of what period of time might be. The issue at hand is, is the wellness committee should be weighing in on this, as well as the students. We do have the class advisor here, would you like to weigh in on the, how long, how much time you need to save, how this works?
My question would be, in September, would I have to back from only serving for three days? What process would I need to do to keep that extension through October in order to have the meetings that you're requiring? Just ask.
You just asked.
Just ask.
Right, to be clear, once the waiver goes, if we haven't fixed it, the school store closes.
Right.
Policy is zero.
We'll just track it.
Because the three days a week was a waiver. It wasn't a change, we didn't change the policy, we waived it for, for the rest of the school year last year. And this, so this year, we would start with a waiver extending it to five days a week.
How would that do in terms of ordering?
Yeah, I'm just going to look at a calendar.
It will... So in October, we'll have more, the other weekend, unless?
And they may also get an idea whether or not the waiver is going to continue or not, and they can continue to keep the store open till the end of the month.
And if, I'm never a fan of setting deadlines that are, we think we better be, no, we're going to blow them. And so if we know some time limits and it was not reasonable, and if it's not, oh, whatever it hit, we'll have to extend, I'd rather say October and need it. Be okay, we are going to, you know, come out of water, we're calling it end of October. That's all that's, right?
So, October 25th would be the last Friday in October. So that gives them seven weeks.
Gives us that.
Gives us seven weeks.
Yeah, you got August too.
It gives them seven weeks.
Yeah, the law is going to be hard.
The, the, okay, so...
A motion about amendment?
So the amendment would be that we would waive the wellness policies, prohibition of school stores until October 25th, 2019, in which case the senior class may operate the last 15 minutes of each lunch. That's, that's, we were all going to be happy. Okay, all right.
Do you second to that?
Second.
Yeah, Melissa.
I second that.
Yeah, well, I just restate your...
Amendment, amended.
Okay, so we are voting on the amendment, whether we are going to have an amendment, and then we'll vote on the, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so in favor of the amendment, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now do we have a motion to waive the policy?
Motion's made, amended, resent the amendment.
You're voting on the amended motion. Now, the original motion's been amended, so we'll vote the original motion that was amended.
I'm confused myself.
No one's making any motions.
You amended the motion, so there's still a motion on the table.
We've got to vote it.
We have to, okay. All right, motion in a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's, there we are.
There you go.
I will say.
I still have time, let's go.
Oh, we have a whole bunch about that. School, student activity accounts at the high school.
We're still going here. All right, moving on, we will have the report from the building and finance subcommittee from the evening of June 19th.
Mr. Bruce?
Okay, we started out with the audit from the outside auditor. Tony Roselli, Roselli and so and so, I think it was, yeah. Roselli, Clark and Associates.
Hey, did we vote that?
Huh?
Did we have a vote out? The outside auditor?
The city auditor.
The city does it?
Yeah, it's the city, the city's outside auditor.
Okay.
And they do the schools, they pick, we seem to always be picked. Well, makes sense, because we're a big, but they're big.
Right, so we didn't request a audit, this was done because the city...
You would have to do it.
It's, you have to do it, it's required.
You have to do it every two years.
Yeah, this is the turnaround, this is the next turnaround, that's what I was trying to figure out, what happened.
Yeah, so what we, what, then I'm trying to...
The issue was that we were audited two years ago, a year ago. And it was, three years ago, there were recommendations made, and when they came back, some of these recommendations had not been implemented. And it wasn't for, on our end, it was on the city's side. Essentially, we had done, we had changed our policies, we had done everything that they had recommended, but the city was supposed to set up accounts, a savings account and then checking accounts for the school activities accounts.
We're starting with Beaman, and then going to grow from there. It took the city CFO, did not set up saving account for almost two years. So we couldn't get this ball, we did it, the school committee took the act, took, made the policy immediately. The CFO sent out letters to all the principals, some principals were much better at it than others. And so, the audit, this is the shorthand version of the audit is, they, they want us to set up savings accounts, now they have checking accounts. And they want, in the student activity account, they want us to set up savings accounts and cap the checking accounts. You know, the high school have a $2,000 one, and the Beaman have a, you know, $1,000 one, and O'Malley have a $1,500 one, in the checking account.
So transfer money into the savings account if it gets more...
Or, yes, or it goes in the savings account, we need to backfill the checking account. So, that was plan A, and plan B is if CFO doesn't do that, then just enact the checking account, make them the depositories. So, so we can get this ball rolling. He noted that the field trips, that the money comes in for field trips, it's going to the classroom teacher, it's going, you know, it's not being written, there's no central depository for those. That it needs to be, it needs to be set up into a field trip account, with different accounts broken down, and it needs to go through the central office.
Central office at the principals.
At the principal, yeah. And, and they need, and at the, at the high school, at O'Malley, we need to implement quick books. The high school got very high athletes, Joan has records back to 1986, and Tony was thrilled.
68, yes. 68.
He was thrilled, because he could go... He was thrilled because he could go back and find out when things started, he loved it. Like he said, this year really big.
Digital, as opposed to.
Yeah, one thing he did notice, because they, schools are tax exempt. The class of two thousand nineteen paid a thousand dollars in sales tax for their prom. Fortunately, Tony was doing the audit the next day and told, said, call them up right now. Did they get the money back?
Yes, they did.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, and another suggestion was that next year, we have him come back again. But every year in between, we have an outside set of eyes look. And he suggested the best way to do this, the most economic way to do this, is to have the, one of the assistant auditors in the city look at our books. Because they're looking at them all the time and just go through them. And maybe the student activity accounts in particular. The high school has a sunshine fund, which doesn't necessarily fall under student activity, but he got feedback of people for pressure, this, that, and the other things. So he says that's something that maybe needs to be discussed. About what the sunshine fund is all about.
Pressured to contribute.
Yes.
Pressured to, okay. He told them, we missed this on our on the year after, we should, that we should consolidate several of these accounts. We did not do this for what it's like, as opposed to consolidate these accounts. Class of two thousand fourteen has twelve hundred eighty-four dollars. Class of forty-two has two hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty cents. College hall has seventy-five dollars and seventy cents. The elicitor is in the red by seven hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Graduation party, oh yeah, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Ingle's prize poem publication, two hundred and fifty dollars. So there's a few others.
Just like those are inter, the accounts that there's been no action for a very long.
Very long time.
And Joan has a story, of course, for each of those accounts when they were and so on, so that's.
So it suggested we consolidate those accounts, close them to donation, close them to donations. And in the meantime, fix the elicitor, that's in the red.
So like the class of nineteen forty-two, do they, I mean, is this something that's like lost property, we report to the state?
No, it's money in an account, it's money in an account.
It's money that was given to the schools, but not.
So it was given to us?
Well, as much as student activities of our, or our, our school, you know. I mean, it's money that's in the account, there's, there are other accounts like that.
So there's a total, the total to be transferred to this high school donation account would be twenty-one hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents.
What's the high school donation?
What would we do with the high school donation account?
What is that?
But do we do it, we do various things, so which one of the, we pay for buses to the middle school jail trip that we do with the SRO. We go to Mascalometh for a, a, economic literacy sort of that, I can't remember the name. Anyway, blades, that's why, the financial literacy, I can't remember the name. So there are those sorts of things we do. So we use them for student activities as much as possible. And then, you know, there's a budget freeze and we need to do some things, we.
So we're not allowed to spend them on textbooks or paper or any of that stuff, it has to be directly.
Right, student activities, and so that's why the bus and those sorts of things are the things that we use, the student activity. Anything that's, it could be marked for student.
To supplement field trips.
That's right, yeah, field trips, exactly, the same thing. So we don't have to apply for that money that we were just talking about.
Right. Another suggestion, oh, and all vendors, because of the ten ninety-nine process, any vendors, DJs or anything that's used at the high school that exceed six hundred dollars, they go through the warrant process, the city will automatically issue a ten ninety-nine. They'll automatically go right through their system because it goes through our warrant process, which that was over the city. So that needs to be, that needs to be tightened up. The yearbook, he was, you know, the way the yearbook is paid for is that there's a lot of cash and checks and things. And one of the suggestions he has is using yearbook company that the students pay directly to. And where his kids go to school, that's how they do it. So it's, nothing goes through the school. They work directly through the, through the yearbook company. So see if the company we use does that.
Who do we use?
Sir, sorry, you'll be, I'm sure there'll be something coming your way, telling you a lot of these little, little places that you need to add into yours. And at the high school, as well as everywhere else, this was a comment that they need to be reviewed. Joan can't just be a little looking at, they need to be reviewed by, you know, students or, you know, the principal or someone else. They need to, you know, just check, you know, check what comes in, you know, bank statement comes in. So needs to sign online.
We're done meeting, not the usual amount.
One other thing I brought up was that athletics was online and is currently not online, so.
The VP.
To be able to pay.
Right.
So I think you guys need to.
As far as student activity.
Yeah, but it still ends up being cash going through somebody's hands.
Yeah, so we put more stuff out, we like try like memes, athletics as well.
So, and that's also at O'Malley. So at O'Malley, they, the middle school is, they had a thirty-four hundred dollar variance in their account for, that's been varying throughout, right now it's thirty-four hundred dollars, goes back fifteen years. And so his suggestion was cut your losses, balance the book, and start with these proper.
Just do a.
Yeah, just go to zero, yeah, just go to zero. And, and also, he suggested that the secretary signs the checks, the secretary would be removed and the principal and assistant principal be the check signers. And also, because O'Malley has a PTO and scholastic book sales, a lot of cash comes in there. The student activity and that's supposed to go back to the library. And so he suggested that we end the school's involvement in that and ask the PTO to take it over. I think one of those, the PTO, the PTO did.
Album entry.
Yeah. Activity account should be separated by the graduating dates. So the account should follow that class. And then when that class moves to the high school, that money moves to them. So grade six comes in, they got a zero balance. Grade eight goes to grade nine, they have the balance to carry with them. So that was, it's a good, it's a good idea. Oh, there was thirty-seven dispersments that were and four of them were without any documentation, which is better than the twenty last time. He found in O'Malley a couple of small sales, sales tax things that happened. And, and he said we should move the student academy to a revolving fund, revolving fund.
Are you getting a report on this?
Yes, we got.
All the recommendations?
Yeah.
Spell out what.
It's in the, it's in the BNF.
The packet.
Packet, it came out on the nineteenth, the nineteenth, the whole, the whole report is. At Vets and East Cluster, he said, get rid of the petty cash, no more. And, you know, if you do need petty cash, ask the PTO, they could pick that up, get rid of it. And tell the PTO you no longer have petty cash to buy, you know, pizza, this, that, and the other thing. Said it was quite comical because the day he arrived, it's pizza day, and the pizza guy came in and the principal, what, he reaches into its own pocket. So take it out of the central account and say it can be out to appropriate schools. So we have a central account for the student activities now. And this needs to be, you know, appropriated to its individual schools where the money came, that needs to be sitting in there. So at Vets, the photography money that came in is supposed to go to student activity account. Much of it gets spent on ineligible projects, expenses, so he, he explained to me that. These are things, but, East Cluster, at Milk Park. Everything was, was very good. The secretary had everything right in line and just how it was supposed to be. At, at Vets, music program recorders need to be in a separate account. Checkbook, you know, needs to be reconciled monthly. Again, the secretary, he went, he told me he's to look at it also, sign it, you know, sign option. He couldn't, he couldn't, he didn't, there was no method to verify nature's classrooms are open. So the money that came in, went out, he, it was, it was no ready, readily available way to tell how many kids actually are. So, and at Vets, the sales tax, she said that she didn't even know about sales tax, you know, schools, you know, she's new on the job, Claire equipment, you know, retired last year. She's new on the job, but, you know, the principal showed her, I'll just be on memo. Tom set up a pretty, pretty scripted memo last year about this, when, two years ago, when we needed to get it up to speed. So that was it, that's got a C minus and East Cluster, they're closer. So that was that. Then, next we went to the budget. Which.
Why don't you just touch on the other things and we'll just take the budget up to there.
That was really it, I don't. We looked at the disapply expenditures, we're gonna, you know, years gonna have five. Open and close tickets for EDW. Food service is in a positive state right now because we won't pursue food service director salary this year until the general survey. We also add to a, food service would end in retro out of the shift whether.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we had to pay that too. Dead on student obligations. I don't know by eighteen hundred dollars, but I don't see what the numbers. Could go to the service.
Is that any yet?
Yeah, no, it's just higher. But I'm watching. Go to food service.
About eighteen hundred dollars in the last month or so.
But it's the end of the year, so, end of school year, so are we, end of the year with that debt?
So it is twelve thou, I'm sorry. Nope. It is twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
And how much is that? Might as well give.
As of May sixth, so almost, so seven weeks ago.
Oh, seven weeks ago.
Oh, no, 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 no. Six, nine, so six, nine, it's fourteen thousand one hundred and, one hundred and fifty-four dollars.
So we ended the school year with fourteen thousand approximately debt after taking the salary out of food service.
No, this is just, this is just meal debt. This is just meal debt, this is just meal debt, no, we finished fifty. No, this is just meal debt. And I don't think, I don't think the nineteen, whatever was.
I don't think that was subtracted.
The eleven, what, the eleven, thirteen hundred. But it's not subtracted. West Parish, which their number. So that was that. What do you want?
There's a couple of transfers that we're gonna have to approve too, but let's move.
They're in the regular app, they're in the regular.
Yeah, let's move to the budget.
No, we got transferred, we have to do budget transfers out of the contingency, the school committee.
Thanks.
Good night.
Let's move to the budget.
Move to the budget. All right, well, the budget, everybody get a sheet?
Yeah, is this the same sheet that we had, is this?
This is the updated.
This is the updated sheet, and then this talks about what the principals added on, the requests and whatnot, so that's what that is, the last. So there's the GHS, the very bottom one is grant funded, and then there's two in there that we didn't have in the budget. So on the, on the very top, at central office, I just wanna point out, there's moved to sped and moved to BD castle. That thirty thousand and fifty-nine, four oh nine, which is eighty-nine, four oh nine, that is the old curriculating coordinator, assistant superintendent position, literacy coordinator, literacy coordinator. So that's, that's where that came from. And then that got moved to sped and, and professional development. In sped, it went to tutors and in professional, a bunch of curriculum stipends, instructional coaches. That's where those went. The other notable one is we already took out the two hundred and fifty thousand on health insurance. The other notable one is a hundred and thirty-two thousand out of sped that we prepaid tuition. And we also bought the elementary, we paid eighty-four thousand, so most eighty-four.
Three, three, four, four textbooks.
Thank you, for the new science textbooks, we bought them out of the issue. Those are the nodules. If anybody has questions, I'll look at them, hopefully carry the directions.
So just to be clear, version one is the budget that we passed for, for the public hearing. Version two is the budget we passed after the public hearing. And version three is the recommended budget that we will reconcile us with what the city does allow.
Correct.
Did we keep the CAD program at the high school?
Yes, we did.
CAD.
There are no loss of positions in this budget.
That's correct.
No, there is a couple of additions.
There's a lien change, so there's a savings from eighty-seven thousand fifty.
Fifty-something, okay. I thought, I didn't know those were in there, I just.
All right, so any questions to make a motion? I move that we approve the school budget of four, forty-three million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven.
Well, there was a tie, should we flip my board?
Tie goes to.
Okay, is there any discussion? So essentially, we have the E L L, um, positions three, uh, were grant funded, um, well, or support the people, we, we, this, there could have been thirty-five thousand in there.
Eighty-five.
And we got those three positions as well as the sped teacher at high school.
And can you just explain why we didn't do the math coach? Cause I wasn't able to go to the main event.
Uh, well, math coach, uh, is, uh, would have been a big expense, and quite frankly, it came up against the reading specialist at the high school. So, uh, some of the other positions, uh, were less, which means you can provide services to more areas, more schools. And reading specialist for kids coming to the high school can't read versus math coach, which would, would have created point five, point five, point five of three of the elementaries, and probably point five at the middle school. These are, these are the decision-making, and I felt that, uh, that the reading specialist in sped has more direct contact with the students, so...
Yeah, no, I, all I would just do is ask if we can identify money halfway through the year or something, or if we need to, if we look at it, if money comes about.
Okay, is there any, uh, discussion that is, uh, public?
There's also the library aid at the high school, so...
What?
We, we put back the library aid at high school.
Which is good, and...
Yeah, and I, I hope next year we'll be able to do another math coach, cause it probably...
All right, is everybody ready to vote?
Maybe two.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Sweet?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
No.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
And Chairman Paul?
Yes. Okay, we will move on. It, uh, passes five to one. Okay, um, we are into action items, and we have, um, approved that, that, that budget, wellness policy. Okay, we need, um, at last meeting, we had, uh, an executive session, we discussed the, um, uh, what are we supposed to do with it tonight?
Yeah, I've seen an executive session, but I thought we did it last executive session.
I thought we did too.
Not transportation.
We didn't do transportation, but it was...
We did ask M A though.
All right, okay, so we got to, um, we gotta go into executive session to talk about the settlement, the tentative agreement that we had with the teams just. But right now, we can approve, we did, um, uh, approve the, um, discuss the F S M A, um, uh, memorandum of agreement, but they hadn't ratified yet, so we're now going...
They have, they're so...
Yep.
And, uh, so, uh, we need a motion.
So, I'm hoping that we approved the S N A memorandum of agreement effective July 4th, two thousand nineteen through June thirty of two thousand twenty-one. If we remember in the second session, oh, sorry. In executive session, um, we had discussed, um, that there was gonna be a two percent increase over in year one, two, and three, with an increase to the sick buyback. Um, however, the sick buyback will effectively go away once the current employees have been through the system. On retirement of each current employee, sick buyback kind of goes away, so although there's a cost upfront, it'll go away. Those are the only two changes.
Is there any, uh, discussion?
Just want to point out, this goes against negotiating strategies we agreed upon entering into these various negotiations. So, I wish we would have stuck to, except we're gonna do one for.
No.
Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Eight carries five one. We have a number of grants here from Gloucester Education Foundation, and I believe these are all...
They are.
Um, re-ups of grants we've gotten in the past. Is there, um, do we have a total? Do, is there any objection to voting all of these at once? Okay, except I need to have a total.
Can you, uh, beg me to interrupt, mentioning the motion first? Nine, ten are, are new, the others are, are annuals. There was a teacher who applied for this training earlier, and, uh, late winter, early spring, this is painted for that. And, um, the water jet cutter and his daughter is, I think that's new.
It's a basic question for, for the STEM programs.
So, the issue of the total, some of these are opt-two's, uh, you get that? Is there really just blanket approve, uh, the grants provided better?
Yeah. Yes, we can just, we can do that.
Well, allocated, um, June nineteenth.
So, we need a motion to approve the, um, grants, um...
I, I move that we approve the Gloucester Education Foundation grants summarized in the letter of June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just for, just for notification, I, I totaled it up, and I know some of it's opt-two, but we're talking about sixty-one thousand dollars worth of grants, so that's excellent.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have three transfers, um, and these are paid for things, um, out of the main office contingency, which requires a vote in the school committee. The first one is illegal, legal services, um, with, um, our extended, uh, legal issues with, uh, G T A in particular. We've overextended our budget for legal services. Telephone service, just fall, fill me in, is that just...
That's part of the, um, the upgrade.
That was upgrading the telephones in the, in the classrooms.
I think that's just horrible telephone service.
Like that's the Verizon bill, isn't it?
Verizon.
Okay, and, um, is, is that, that's because we always spent that budget?
Yes.
And the sped nurse, um, yeah, was that, was that preschool?
Uh, no, that was, um, contracted services, I'm not sure what school that was for.
Uh, that may be not even at a school. That may be at somebody else's school.
That could be, that could be a crime on it.
So, we don't know what that is?
Well... Was it in the B and F package, this one, these, what, these came?
Yeah, these came out of the B and F. Oh, yeah, one of these were in, uh, the C F O.
Right.
Yeah, do we have that?
Can I mention where it was from? I gotta check.
Yeah, let's just find that, just so we can explain this.
Okay.
I know we talked about it, I just don't remember what we said.
No. No, it just says, "School committee in sues transferred out to increase the budget for legal services, phone services, sped services." We don't have any notes on that.
Did we hire a sped nurse for part of the year or something?
It's contracted services, which means that, um...
Yeah, you should check that account.
Well, I would, um, we need to do these by the end of the year, in the end of the years.
I would just ask for a follow-up at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we just, uh, could we just get some, uh, follow-up on, on what these are at our next meeting?
Okay. Probably ask Cody, but they were on it, the B and F.
Yeah, I, I know we talked about it, and I...
Yeah, and I, I didn't take any notes on it, too much of it.
All right, so do we have a motion to transfer forty-three thousand dollars out of the main office contingency? For the fall improvement? Okay, any discussion? We're gonna request a, a, some follow-up information on these.
Yeah, even if it comes by email, as long as we get it.
Yeah, we can do it through email. Uh, let me just take a look here, telephone services. Well, let me, I'll keep looking as the meeting progresses.
Okay.
What, what good's information if you're voting on it already?
We can rescind it if we don't like it.
No.
Now, you're outside the window and call for our consideration.
You don't have to. You don't need consideration, you can do a motion to rescind.
Well, not, not within, not, you gotta do it before you...
Might be gone, okay.
You know, we, this spending this money here, it falls to the bottom line for the city too.
It's money, it's money spent.
And these are bills that, that are already, these are, these are bills, these are not, um, these are, um, not something we're thinking about buying. These are not something that they've got bought.
What's our annual telephone bill?
Uh, fifty thousand.
Now, we have to spend fifty... Fifty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine, and we still have the two bills to do.
So, that's like an eighteen percent over on telephone use. I'm just like, that's, you know, it's not insignificant.
Yeah, let me just look this up real quickly.
Maybe it's why you're on the phone with the lawyer. We probably need a nurse out to it.
She's scatting with her bucket chair.
I mean, forty-three thousand dollars, we have to get some information on that.
All right, well, let's just, um, table that for the moment.
I'll find that next.
Okay, we, uh, we have a request, um, to authorize, um, a stipend position. And this went through B and F, and it's approved for a coordinator of student obligations, a stipended position, pending review of the, uh, job description by the personnel subcommittee.
So, why do we have to vote on it now without the review? Is there, can I just wait until September to vote on it?
Well, it's a stipended position, so I assume somebody that's...
We, we voted on the money, this does not necessarily mean that if we're voting on it tonight, it needs to go to personnel to be reviewed.
Yeah, it's just, it's just means that...
We, we said, okay, the money's okay.
We're not hiring somebody, it, it, it's, it's approving the money to be spent on it.
And then it goes to personnel to review the job description, and if they say, okay, we said the money's okay.
So...
So, we're gonna have to do it.
Well, in terms of timing, if we're expecting to make progress on our student obligations in the summer, or...
This is, this is about that eighteen, whatever he said it was, eighteen thousand dollars, uh, that's owed by the, um, the foods, you know, to food service. And, and it, the problem is that it is, is just taking up too much of Martha Jo's time chasing this money down, and who, who's a very high-paid, um, personnel, and the, and the... The idea is that there's probably somebody working for us currently who could, um, devote some time to this.
And other obligations.
And, and other obligations.
To consolidate, uh, we have a number of collections, uh, transportation, uh, preschool, food service, and athletic fees. So, the idea was to consolidate under one person, uh, a lower salary than, uh, supervisor's salary, to, uh, do a lot of the late work. And, uh, we would pay for it through charging the, um, revolving funds. So, each, each of these have revolving funds to collect the, uh, monies.
So, so my question has to do with timing, are we trying to make progress in August, or are we trying to make progress now on student obligations?
Doesn't matter, so it's...
Doesn't matter, it has to be.
It starts with personnel.
They can't even hire anyone yet.
We, uh, we can't, but, uh, this is just to get the ball rolling.
It's just to refer it to personnel.
Yeah, it's just to refer it to personnel.
So, yeah, I think we can approve that the position is gonna exist.
Yeah.
Cause I, I mean, I looked at the job description briefly, and I know there's some changes that have to be made in it, I don't see it as a big deal, but I think we can approve tonight that we are gonna have a coordinator of student obligations.
We gotta approve the funding.
Right, and then we'll just look at the job description.
And personnel can take up the job description. Okay, so, do we have a motion?
That we approve, um, the coordinator of student obligations stipend position, um, as recommended by B and F.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
So, this was like a couple thousand dollars, right? Did I read it correctly?
It was like forty-eight hundred or something.
Forty-hundred, so, I didn't, it was, it seemed like small, more than one...
Forty-six, I'm...
I just don't know how they can do it with forty-six, only forty-six hundred dollars of a stipend, it looks like it's an extremely large job, but...
Well, it's a little secret, but...
I don't pick folks, incredible, that job, that job is pretty long.
That doesn't change.
All right, um, the job description is up, still up for discussion. So, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And then we have the approval, the application to school bus transportation for two thousand nineteen and twenty, and there's basically just, um, uh, one change. There are two in the pack, the, um, the new one is on the top first, right? And the, uh, old one is down below, and you can see that we had all these, we had, um, more options in the F B base transportation, and they've reduced that to just two options. They had some special cutout for grade six. So, they've included grade six with K, so it's not K six, that's the same situation. I don't think there's, there's any other changes in it.
We just think that the language simplified it, uh, used the word catchphrase, since that's in our policies, and, uh, the, since at least, I went back my computer, since two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, six instead of being from over one mile to two miles, instead of one point five miles to two miles, oh, why? You know, just, just make it uniform, so that's really the only change that we have. Yeah, let's vote.
Do we have a motion to, um, approve the, um, application for school bus transportation?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we shall now, um...
So, I found, um...
Most transfers you...
I found a sped nurse that between, um, year-to-date spent and encumbrances, it's in a negative fifty-five thousand ninety-one cents. So, thirty thousand of that will go to that account, so we can transfer, and then other transfers can be approved, no transfer lines.
What was it?
Just sped nurse?
Sped nurse, the thirty thousand in that transfer.
Was part of a bigger debt?
It, it's in the salary sped nurse line, it's right now between, um, year-to-date paid and encumbrance to finish the year up. It's negative fifty-five thousand ninety-one cents.
I thought we had to bring in a preschool nurse.
That was last year. Was that the, the way to add a shift?
She's, she's been with us for a few years now.
We had to add that position.
I thought we had to add to it, no?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought we did.
Yeah, I thought we did.
We did add.
You added to her hours.
We added to her hours. So, well, that could come for some, I mean, we vote, these are all things, budget lines that have been overspent, that we're basically trying to clean up for the end of the year.
So the telephone was Windstream Holding, that was for fourteen thousand, seven sixty-seven, and that's a high-speed telephone line for data, and that's usually paid, I believe, out of technology, so this must have charged to the wrong account. So that created a higher than the budget, and we needed to transfer eight thousand in to cover that invoice.
So we need to make a transfer, you need to correct your books, is my question.
We already made the transfers, the transfers we voted tonight.
No, I know that.
This could, this could go in either category.
Either place, okay.
So it's fine.
Is I T R money?
Yeah, everybody's out of money this week.
Well, we transferred, we transferred all the money to tuition account to do the prepay.
Got you.
So are we willing to vote on this, these transfers?
Can you just tell me what the bottom number of the prepay was?
Sure. Prepay was a billion, it means a billion fifty-seven thousand.
All right, so make a motion that we authorize the CFO to appropriate forty-three thousand, four hundred dollars from the main office contingency account for the following, legal services, fifty-four hundred dollars, telephone service, eight thousand dollars, sped nurse, thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did we vote the coordinated one? The what, the coordinated one? We were talking about? Yes, we did, yeah, I'm gonna say a yes.
Okay, so we are now down to
There's nothing new required.
There's nothing, yeah, we already talked about school building, the preschool location, there is ongoing discussions, I believe, about
Security?
Oh, the school preschool location.
Yeah, we haven't met since last time, I reported on that, but
There's nothing new.
I presume that the options that were presented to the city administration, I'm quite sure, in a related matter, we met today on security options, entrances, entrances, that's security options for both middle school and the high school as well, the information that I'm expecting the architect to present to city administration sometime in the very near future as well, so they can begin to think about how to move forward with that.
Just to clarify, I know we're looking at the Vines Building, finding space at O'Malley, are we, have we foreclosed the option, or closed off the option, that we would try and rent long enough years so that we appropriated to EG Dutch, another to reimburse for it?
It's one of the options that costs, you're just costing things up, is one of the
I'm just busy with design tonight with designs and stuff, at some point, we have to figure that out, you know, I assume it'll probably work if we go to Schoolhouse Road, because it's so tight, adding even more classes is probably problematic, but right up the Schoolhouse Road, and we want to go that route, I assume that's a tick before we get too far down the EG Dutch process, or at least tell them, hey, can you keep a wall with utilities up to the edge, or we break a wall down and add classes three to in two years? That's one of the, I hate to miss the synergy here of
Yeah, there's a, there's a cost associated with that as well.
Of course.
I think they've seen, actually seen numbers that were associated with building new on Torquay, on to that project, they were high because they're high.
Right.
Okay. All right. We need to go into executive session to review and approve teams' transportation workers' memorandum of agreement, and I saw move.
Second.
Second, roll call vote.
Ms. Sweet?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Mr. Gross? Chairman Pope?
Yes, so we will recess for five minutes and so that